Good evening, council. If we can make sure our mics are on, that'd be great. I call this June 25, 2024 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Corporal Lynch is our sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance and for the attendance of all your peers. This evening, I will be leading our invocation. We celebrated freedom and independence for Juneteenth a few weeks ago. We will be celebrating our nation's freedom and independence next Wednesday here in Morrisville. It is easy to become complacent, but we need to remember that freedom is not free. It was hard-won by our predecessors, and only by being engaged, informed, and active participants in managing our lives and our town and our country will we remain free in the ways that matter for us and our families. I am proud of the intentional engagement Morrisville presents, and I hope that in the short term, many people apply to serve on our resident advisory committees, and in the longer term, our residents, both young and old, take an active part leading up to the elections occurring this November, which will affect our lives for years to come. As Abraham Lincoln said, "The best way to protect the future is to create it." Let us work together tonight to take actions to create an even brighter future for Morrisville and its families. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to share at this time?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 5-0, 6-0 actually. Councilmember Rao is on his way. Should have mentioned that earlier, I apologize. There are six items on this evening's consent agenda. An FY24 budget capital project ordinance amendment, fourth quarter. A resolution acknowledging the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program grant requirements. Approval of May 2024 Town Council meeting minutes. A resolution authorizing the police chief to award a service sidearm. A resolution approving of special events and notice to NC DOT for 2024 road closures. And a resolution rescinding Resolution 2024-139-0 approving inter-local agreement with Wake County for administration of erosion and sedimentation control. Would anyone like to remove any of these items for discussion before I entertain a motion in a second? I entertain a motion. A motion from Councilmember Robati, a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella. All those in favor of adopting this evening's consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0 as well. We are now at item eight. There is one administrative report this evening, the Morrisville Smart Shuttle program update. Administrative reports are intended to be for information only. Council members, do you have any questions?
Yes.
I'd like to recognize Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson and Fender.
I think both Councilmember Fender and myself have questions, and also Robati.
Excellent.
I'll go first. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the update on the Morrisville shuttle service. In your report, you had shared some key metrics that we had discussed at our last update, and it does show that there is more use of the Saturday service, and we have planned for more Saturday service with the fiscal year 2025 budget, as I understand. This is an on-demand shuttle, so a lot of the users aren't necessarily using it for work purposes. We don't have a route at this time. The one thing that I was most curious about is the node request process. Now that we've had this shuttle for several years, I have been approached, as well as other council members, about adding a node here or adding a node there, and I just wanted to first hear from you what your process is so that we can help others understand it too.
Sure, that's a great question, thank you. For the record, Caleb Lard, I'm the Planner to Transportation for the town, and I do manage the Smart Shuttle. So, we collect feedback, just like you're describing, at events, phone calls, emails, really, any way folks would like to get in touch with us. What I do is I record a name, just to make sure that it is, you know, an individual that is requesting this, and then I'll keep a record of that in a spreadsheet. So that 30% you saw in that report, that is taking all of that data that we've collected from patrons or community members, and running that kind of feedback through this administrative report. So my request would be, when you do get that feedback, feel free to pass them along to myself, and that way we can keep it recorded for when it's time to evaluate the service changes. And I'm, you know, always happy and excited to talk to folks in the community about the service, so.
So I'll give you a little advance warning, and I'm going to find your form and help fill out all the required elements, so thank you for that information. Is, one of the benefits of the shuttle is to have independence, and we have populations within our town that do not drive, and a shuttle has helped them. We have access to the shopping malls, we have access to major areas within the town, such as our park system and so forth, but we don't have more than one stop at the senior center. We have a senior center Luther by the Charlotte Baptist Church that doesn't have a stop, and so I know Mayor Colley has mentioned this in the past, but what I'd like to see is a review of potential stops that include seniors more. We have senior, at least three senior communities, and we have two senior community centers. So it would be helpful for this independent living model to connect those communities, such as, we do have stops at Kiss Creek, at Breckenridge, at other neighborhoods, so this is not inconsistent with that kind of mobility and option. So I'll be filling out your form, but I'll also bring it as a roundtable, just to back up a little bit of the discussion with the council. But thank you so much for your report, it was very helpful.
Absolutely, thank you for your feedback.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Sorry. It's like I've never done this before. All right, I appreciate your report, and I was very grateful to read that you are adding the node along Church Street, because I have heard a lot of feedback from individuals that have requested that node. So, one question to follow up on Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's question was, you mentioned people can let you know by email or phone number, but how do they know what email or phone number to use?
So we have several emails that folks can contact. There is a Smart Shuttle email that's on our website, and it's also in the app, so when you send a message through the app, that goes directly to that email. And so I will, I'm happy to collect feedback in any method that folks can give it to us, so if I get it in my, you know, my email box, I'm happy to collect it that way as well. It's really whatever form is most convenient for the community members.
All right. Is there information posted at the senior center that would give that type of information for people?
Such as an email or phone number?
Yeah, like a flyer on a bulletin board.
Sure, we can certainly provide a flyer to the senior center. I assume you're referring to the one on Church Street, or the ones that don't already have a node?
Just for information purposes, the senior center that's in the Harris Teeter shopping, I mean, I've seen that you've had a lot of brochures and flyers and information that you're giving out at events. I would hope that some of that material would be posted in the senior center, if it's not already.
Absolutely, and we can certainly confirm that it's not, and get that information over to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I have a couple more questions. On the first page, there's a bullet that says, it speaks to seat unavailable booking response, and it says, seat unavailable messages have increased just 1% from 23 to 24. response, and it says, seat unavailable messages have increased just 1% from 23 to 24. So that tells me how much it's increased, but it doesn't tell me what the total is.
The total is seat unavailable messages?
Mm-hmm.
So, we've been collecting and analyzing that data as a percent of the total, and that way we can verify if the service is, as you know, is over capacity. So we can certainly provide that if it's the county council's interest in the future, but that's not how we've been recording it in the past.
We have graphs, bar graphs, in the last couple pages of the report that break it down by weekday, Saturdays, and Sundays, but you don't have it just all of the data combined.
So, the request would be to combine the percentages or those totals? Like the, you know...
Take the, I would expect you already have that data available, rather than break it down by weekday, Saturdays, and Sundays, just break it, keep all the days together.
So that actually is provided, partially provided in that request. Ride status by time of day, does have that in there, but it's compiled with all of the data.
Where are you talking?
Oh, my apologies.
Where do you see it?
Attachment five has all of the ride statuses by request.
Okay, I have not seen attachment five, I'm just looking at your report.
Sure, no problem. So we can certainly group those together. I will say the purpose of separating them is that our services on the weekends offer, I mean, it's at different hours, different, you know, during the week, we have a second vehicle, so they were separated just to, it's hard to compare apples, apples to oranges or...
Right, I understand. It does show that the biggest concern is on Saturdays, is when you have the most cases of percent of seats unavailable. The one thing that concerns me here, and there's no way to get this data, is the people that have just given up trying to request a seat because they constantly get seat unavailable. And I know people that that is happening to people. And, you know, my concern is twofold. There's that going on, that people that want to use it are frustrated because they can't ever get a seat, and then two, we see these comments on Facebook, or in portals, or hear it, comments face to face, about why do we even have this smart shuttle? We always see it just sitting there on, at Church Street Park, or there's only one person in the shuttle anytime I see it. So you've got those naysayers that want to complain about it, while at the same time, people that want to use it are frustrated with it because they can't ever get a seat during the busiest times. So, I saw in the report that we're looking at getting the second shuttle on Saturdays in January 2025. Why is it going to take six months? I know this has been brought up before.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, as you know, we partner with GoCarry to operate our service. They actually have to go out to bid to get new riders for each additional shift that they run. January 1st was selected as, obviously it's halfway through the year, so it's a good opportunity for us to coordinate with our partners, make sure that that vehicle is fully staffed by a driver and operational by January 1st. So that's kind of where the January 1st came from, as it's selected. And I believe it was funded starting on January 1st as well.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just extremely frustrated because this process has seemed to take so long. I mean, we had some of the same, the same feedback within a year of using the shuttle about getting the unavailable messages, wanting additional nodes, and we were told, well, we got to have a year's worth of data. And then we got to a year, and then we were told, we got to have another year's worth of data. So, I mean, I am grateful that you guys did change the algorithm, so increase the amount of time that it buffers the rides. I am grateful you've done that. I am just frustrated at how long it's taking to make changes that makes it more effective.
Absolutely. And I will say, luckily, you know, with your approval, that we will be able to get started on the transit study, which will hopefully answer a lot of those concerns.
And that's actually my last question. What's the timing of the transit study?
So it, you know, similar as for GoCarry, you know, a lot of coordination would have to happen. I think we're hoping to get that started either the later half of 2024 and early 2025, and we're going to get that kicked off at that time.
Do you have a guess at what the duration is? Is it going to be three months, six months, a year?
I do not have a firm duration, but we're going to work as diligently as we can to get it done quickly, while also providing the community opportunities to provide lots of feedback.
Thank you. I do, I do believe we're going in the right direction for adding a second shuttle on Saturdays, so that will be an improvement. Thank you.
You? Councilmember Robati, please.
I also believe that we're going in the right direction, and I was very encouraged by the metrics in your report. Particularly, I wanted to ask a question about page six, the unique riders per node metric. So I see that we have 2,200 unique riders on the Morrisville Carpenter node, which is, I think, a pretty big number. I was actually surprised by that number, and I think that's great. So when we, when we go to like the McCrimmon Corners node and there's 1,900 people, some of those 1,900 could, they could be represented in more than one category, correct? So it's not, if we add up all these, all these unique rider metrics, we won't get a total number of riders, because there, people could be in more than one, more than one category if they travel to more than one node.
You're on the right track, yes. So unique riders would be those individual accounts. And so, you know, you, for example, I might have four people with me riding on one account, so the unique riders would register as one, as opposed to, you know, it's one account that's booking the trip for multiple people. And so that's, that's where it wouldn't quite line up to your total completed rides, but it would line up to, you know, those are just the accounts that have booked the ride.
Okay, and I may have missed it in here somewhere, but how many, do you have a sense of how many accounts or how many rides are booked for multiple people? What percentage of the rides?
I do not have that data off the top of my head, but it is something that is collected as part of the data collection. So it's something that we can certainly provide council an update on when we come back in the fall.
I'd be interested in that as a metric, just because I think it would give a fuller picture of exactly how many people are using the shuttle. The other thing that I had a question about was, so when we look at staffing for the shuttle, do we, like, right now, we support, I want to say, 19 nodes, something around there, right? But some of these nodes don't get very much usage, specifically on Perimeter Park North and South. And I think we could, you know, make a guess that that's because the shuttle isn't really the mode for reliable transportation to work, and that's what most people would be using it for if they're going to Perimeter Park North or South. So what I'm wondering is, if we decided to, to do away with those two nodes on the route, so I'm not suggesting that we do that, but if we did, then would that, if we added a node such as a Shiloh Park, I mean, a Shiloh Senior Center node, that would get a lot more usage, how does that change the staffing, or how does that, like, in other words, do we, do we factor in the number of rides and the number of riders into how many shuttles we need to be staffed?
That would be something to consider, because the more rides that we have, you know, obviously, the more demand, the, you know, the more challenges capacity of the existing service fleet. So it'd certainly be a consideration. It is something that we do consider when we are evaluating new nodes, not only how popular, you know, and we anticipate it being, but also where it's located. If it's farther outside the service area, if it's the farthest node we have, it's going to take a lot longer to get there, and to pick someone up and to bring them back to the rest of the nodes, which could mean, you know, giving up trips for someone who's, you know, closer to, say, here. And so those are all things to be considered. I think that, if I may read between lines, swapping Perimeter Park for a Shiloh Park, or a Shiloh Community Center node, it would, I think it's safe to assume, based on the feedback we've received, that it would be utilized more frequently than Perimeter Park. So that would have to be taken into consideration, that, you know, yes, it is still within what I would consider our service area, however, it would produce more riders, and thus it would, you know, impact our, our capacity. So that's, that's a very good point.
Okay. And my last question is about signage. Maybe not specifically signage, but to Councilmember Fender's point, how do people know how to leave feedback? I haven't opened the app in a while. Is there a place in the app that you can just click to leave feedback, or that you can click to talk to a person, or like, you know, how usual apps have that sort of thing?
Sure, so there are a couple of ways, and I apologize, Councilmember Fender, I forgot about this until just now, but the QR code on the sign actually takes you to our website. So when you scan that code, it'll take you to our website, the Smart Shuttle email's on there, I believe my contact's on there as the project manager. In addition, there's the phone number that's on the sign, and that will take you to the regional call center, where you can, you can book directly with them, but you, it's not a place to provide feedback. However, through the app, there is a contact us section, and that goes straight to the Smart Shuttle email, and so I receive those daily and respond daily to those.
Okay, and I think that's great, and I wonder about maybe a, because I also am concerned about the amount of time that people sometimes wait for a shuttle, and people that have given up, and I've talked to them too, so, but I wonder if, if something like shuttle best practices would help? Like, you know, if you book a shuttle before 10 o'clock or after 3 o'clock, you'll see shorter wait times, you know, stuff like that, so that people, because a lot of people that take the shuttle don't actually, don't actually have to be concerned about what time they get anywhere, they just want to get there.
Sure.
So, you know, if you, I'm just thinking that if you, maybe some, some active outreach, like an account that's gotten a no shuttle available response several times, you could reach out to, you know, that, that they could get some kind of a bot message that would say, you've gotten three shuttle not available responses, have you tried these three things that might make for a better experience? Like, just some kind of, because people that are using the shuttle, like, I hate to see them stop using it, because I, I mean, we want people to use it as much as possible, but I, you know, I totally get why they might stop.
Sure.
So, anyway, those are just some thoughts about ways that maybe we could keep riders engaged and, you know, and develop better feedback loops.
Absolutely. Thank you for your feedback.
Yeah, thank you very much, great presentation.
And for those at home, the email is actually smarts shuttle@morrisvillenc.gov, and it is, you can click on a link on our webpage to get to that. Also note that Morrisville Central is our Morrisville app, and using that, you can also get to the Smart Shuttle as well, through the little destination icon. If no one else has any other questions about this administrative report, on behalf of the whole council and the town, thank you for shepherding our first microtransit. It's going, I think, really well. As was said, we're going in the right direction, and I think we're all interested in sort of giving it more capacity. So thank you for all your work on this, Caleb. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for your time. Take care.
Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge that Councilmember Rao made it. Unfortunately, there was a traffic accident on 40, which delayed some of our council members to get here. Tonight, we have three presentations. At this time, I'll read the proclamation recognizing July 2024 as National Parks and Recreation Month. Afterwards, we will invite Mary Fawcett, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Director, to come forward to accept the proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Morrisville, and whereas parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, and contribute to the environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid the prevention of chronic disease and improve the mental and emotional health of all residents, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economy through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, promoting tourism, reducing crime, and attraction and retention of businesses, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, helping improve water quality, improve the quality of the air we breathe, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the town of Morrisville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Morrisville, and encourages everyone to explore and enjoy their local parks, greenways, and recreation resources. Director Fawcett, if you'd join me up front, please. Might want to stand here. Congratulations, thank you for everything you do for us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, Mayor, Council, thank you for all of your continued support and the senior leadership. This is recognizing our July as Parks and Recreation Month, so those of you who do not follow us on social media, please do so. Those who do follow us, continue to stay engaged, that that is where our post and marketing is going to go about all the fun things that we have coming up, and not to forget to save the date for July 3rd for red, white, and boom.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We will now have two staff retirement recognitions. I'll ask Jeanne Hooks, Director of Management Services, to come forward for the first recognition.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and special guests in the audience tonight. Tonight, we are here to honor Ms. Nancy Emsley, our Finance Director. She's decided to retire from the town of Morrisville to focus on family. Nancy's unwavering commitment to family, it's always ever present in her heart, her mind, and her spirit. And if there's ever, I heard someone, I think it was the town manager the other day, say, if there's ever a right reason to retire, it's family first, right? Her arrival with us in 2016 brought us a ray of sunshine. I say that intentionally, because Nancy actually has won the thumbs up award for the ray of sunshine twice, twice. She brought a ray of sunshine to our finance department back in 2016. Her compassionate spirit and her faith have been her guide through, throughout her eight years with the town of Morrisville as our Finance Director. Nancy has balanced our fiscal accountability with leading her department staff in a caring manner, supporting our departments, our organization, and to work towards achieving our strategic goals in the community. She skillfully led us through the transition of a legacy accounting system. This was an impressive, led us to a new and impressive ERP system. It was no small feat, was it indeed? Nancy created a small team, a strong team around this effort, and the ERP train, as we called it, successfully landed at the station. Her dedication to the town of Morrisville resulted in sustaining Morrisville's AAA credit rating. This is critical in our organization to actually remaining nimble, to leverage debt effectively, to pay for things like our parks, our streets, and facilities like our fire station 3 that was recently open. It's nice to know we had Nancy and her team behind that. It's nice to know we had Nancy and her team behind that to help our folks realize those outcomes. In her leadership, she's also navigated us through a bond referendum, countless debt financing instruments, and what Nancy is very passionate about and, and very good at is securing quality returns on our cash investments, making the most of what we have. She proudly has maintained, and this is going to be a long one, our Government Finance Officers Association Annual Comprehensive Financial Reporting Award for Excellence. Did I get it right? Ongoing for 28 consecutive years. She's very proud of that, and we're very proud of you for helping us maintain that. Beyond her professional achievements, Nancy has a servant heart. She has shown the meaning of stewardship through her community engagements and volunteering at things like Spring Fest and serving on nonprofit committees like as Treasurer for the Fire Chaplain 101, I dug that one up. I had to verify that with her. And gracing us really with her singing talents. If anybody did not know, she's a very accomplished singer at events like our Veterans Day Celebration. These are only just a few examples of really what Nancy's many contributions to our town over the eight years she's been with us. Her personal and professional investments in our community and our organization have truly been representative of our core values of dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. Thank you. Nancy, as you embark on this transformation, and I joked with you, your metamorphosis towards retirement, please know that you have impacted everything that you've done through your work, and it will be remembered, and it's woven into the fabric of Morrisville forever. On behalf of our entire town, we express our deepest gratitude to you, Nancy, for everything that you've done and your invaluable contributions to the town of Morrisville. Never underestimate the difference that you have made. I simply leave you with, this is not goodbye. This is till we meet again, and it's a heartfelt thank you. Mayor, I think I've left you a plaque that we're going to honor Nancy with. And I'll ask Nancy to step forward.
Actually, I was thinking each of us can say a little something if you wish. And then we'll do the plaque, and then we'll do a photo.
Thank you.
That seems like that'll flow nicely. You're the behind the scenes hero for the town, making sure that everything happened, the ERP, keeping our credit rating and everything, everything that Jeannie already said. I was going to mention the singing, she stole the thunder from a lot of us. But thank you so much for your hard work and dedication behind the scenes. It's so important to all of us. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scruggan Johnson.
So Nancy, I have really enjoyed the last eight years working with you because budget and finance are two of the things that council members have to keep an eye on throughout the year. And whenever we had questions, both you and Jeannie were available to us. And you actually got excited and were telling the finance situation like a story, and it was very engaging. Every time I'd ask a question, I would learn something new. And I really appreciate that. You never treated any question like it was too big or too small. You were always very enthusiastic and helpful and just made it very relatable. And that is something that not everybody can do. And you are just brilliant at it. So thank you so much for that. I enjoyed working on the ERP project with you. That is something that was near and dear to my heart. And it was something that we needed desperately in the town. We had to restart, and it was hard because to acknowledge we had to redirect and truly pivot to bring us to the next step. You delivered the messaging well. You worked with the staff, you, you worked with the team, you worked with the council, and we did it. We didn't just do it, though. We nailed it. And we have other communities looking at Morrisville as a case study. So congratulations to you and the team. I mean, that is a huge achievement that will resonate for many, many years to come. And then finally, your talent is outstanding. I mean, I've had the honor of hearing your singing voice several times in the last year, and it's, it's just heartwarming. And thank you for sharing that with us. I know you share that with many different communities and so forth, but we appreciate that. And we hope that you can visit and we'll try to find some opportunities to have you visit and maybe sing a little bit, too. So please know that you will be missed. And thank you so much for your service to the town.
I'm not at all surprised that Councilmember Scruggan Johnson liked to talk about process and ERP, which is pretty great. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
I think I like a lot of the things that Vicky has talked about. But Nancy, I got to tell you, when I joined the entire ERP or the, I don't know, the system, which was before Intergal, it was Sun Trust or something.
Sun Guard.
Sun Guard, yeah, exactly. Yeah, it, it was a total disaster. You know, the difficult addition at the time to let it go and then transition to Intergal. At that time, I, I still remember during the budget phase, we had to let go several hundred thousand dollars to cut their contract out. But I think that was one of the best things that we have done in the town. Seamless integration between the departments. You know, like, we had several departments when I first came. They were all having different, different softwares, different, different time zones of how things were doing. But having this intergo and working seamlessly from planning to engineering to inspections to, you know, to the fire department and others, you know, like, to ensure everything was done seamlessly. I think that shows efficiency. And also looking from the voice of the customers, where people always came and said, why do I have to come to town of Morrisville to fill in the paperwork? Why can't we do it online? You know, the air conditioning guys, the electricians, who were, don't have much time, but, you know, they had to come in, do a paper copy, get it, and take a permit to go do the work. Now they can do it. A lot of work has been done, and I think you should be very, very proud as to make us feel proud to what we are today here. And nevertheless, all that is okay. But your attitude and your smiley face is the key for everything because you were able to move in through the departments and tell them like, hey, look, this needs to be done. And who we are is a lot of work in the background that you were doing. And we are really, really grateful for all your service here. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Robi, please.
Well, he's always a hard act to follow, but I, I just want to say you've been really a pleasure to work with. I mean, you know, you're so positive, and I was really impressed with your singing. I was always thinking about that over the years, of how well you can sing. And obviously, the ERP was the major achievement along with all the finance and all the work you did. So I just want to thank you and wish you all the best in your, in your new journey and time with your family. And please come back and visit and spend your money in Morrisville. Thank you.
Councilmember Robi, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
You know, Nancy, I think that, I agree with absolutely everything that's been said. And I think that, you know, the, the goal always for, I think, everyone on our staff is to provide excellent service. And, you know, that, for you, that's really twofold, which is to be an expert in your field, in your finance field, and keep us running, and keep us on track, and, you know, keep, be responsible for all the things that you're responsible for. And then the second thing is to turn around and explain it to us. And I think I have kind of a unique take on this because I talk to subject matter experts all day, people that are experts in their, their field, a highly complex field like, like finance. And I can tell you that to find someone that on the first try could explain something to me so that I understand it is, I feel like that's a skill that you really don't get enough credit for. Because I, I always, I always felt like I came out of every conversation with you smarter than when I went in. And that's, and you're such a joy to talk to. And I think, I, I know how much we're going to miss you and what giant shoes you're leaving behind to fill. And I hope that you will be as happy in retirement as you've made all of us over the years. And I wish you joy in your time with your family.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Johnson. And you, I see you're trying to keep it together over there.
Yes.
I'll be quick. I know I haven't known you as long as the others. So you do have a beautiful singing voice, and I am very, very grateful that you chose to stick it out until we passed our budget. So thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So Nancy, I've been trying not to look at you, so I have to apologize because I, I can, I can break down very easily, and especially when I'm having to say goodbye to somebody who's so loved and has meant so much to this town. It can be difficult, but Jeannie did a great job. Thank you, Jeannie. You did a great job. I, I just want to say ditto to everything Jeannie said. She captured the sentiment of this organization and council in thanking you for all that you have done for us. Your legacy will live on forever in this town. You, you, the work you have done is embedded in everything we do now. So we appreciate that legacy. And, and I always talk about the fact that as elected officials, but as public servants too, you all know that we want to leave a place better than we found it. And you can be very, very proud. You have left this place better than you found it when you came here. So thank you for your public service. Thank you for what you've done for the town of Morrisville. And I wish you just great joy and happiness in your retirement. Well, well deserved, and just wish you all the best.
So if Jeannie and Nancy can approach over here.
Do you have to say a few things?
Yeah, we'll do that right up here if you want.
Oh, do you want me to do that up there?
Yeah. These are for them. Jeannie, you should come up too, to give support. So I'm going to give this to you. You should be in the middle.
Oh, okay.
We'll get one quick picture, and then we'll let you speak, and then we'll get a picture of the group and anyone else you want. Come this way a little bit. Okay, now we'd love to hear your thoughts. You can stay up here, too.
I'm going to try my hardest to not get too emotional. I'm retiring a little bit earlier than what I had planned. My goal was to see us through the budget, to get us through the audit, to do our 2024 annual financial report, which for me is a labor of love, as you all know. But I love my husband more. Oh, and I also wanted to get us through the bond issuance, too. That would be my fourth time issuing bonds for the town. And that was, that's quite an accomplishment to, to quarterback that whole process. And so it would have been number four for issuing bonds. So I wanted to do that in September, get us through our department presentation in November. But God had different plans for, for me and my family. So it's, I want to thank my staff. You guys have been so great and so supportive. And you've helped me to shine and make our departments shine. So, so thank you. Thank you for your, all your hard work and your dedication. You have made my job so much easier, being your, being your theater, because you all do such excellent work. I want to thank the, the council for all the opportunities that you afforded me here. The ERP system was a huge lift. And I am so thankful that we were able to do that because when COVID happened, we never could have done that with the legacy system that we had. We would not have been able to have, been able to work remote, to be able to continue working. So I'm very thankful that we had the ERP system in place. And I am so honored to have served as your Finance Director for all these years. It was my plan to retire from here. And I was actually planning to retire in November, after we, in November and November, early December, after we got through everything we needed to do. But like I said, my family comes first, and I appreciate that you all recognize that, too. But I will miss all of you, and I'm not going to say goodbye either because I want to see Town Center. That's one of the things that I've got to see what happens with Town Center. And I'm really looking forward to, can I be at the ribbon cutting? Because that's been something that, I would love to see that take fruition as well. But thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you, Jeannie, for, for, for partnering with me. She's been my partner in crime all these years. Not, not bad crime, good crime. And so, so thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. And, and thank you most for your understanding that I have to put my family first. My husband is here tonight with us, along with my son. And I'm glad that he was feeling well enough to make it this evening, so.
So.
Yes, I'd love to have, love to have my team come up, please, if you would, and my family. And I think I did pretty good holding it together.
Okay, I will now ask Peter Costa, our police chief, to come forward for the final recognition of the evening.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight to honor Tracy and celebrate her career and her retirement. She's been crying all day. And I certainly understand why because I understand and I get to see every day the heart that she puts into her work every single day and the heart that she puts into all of the folks that she works with. But one of the most important things I want to start with tonight is, Tracy is a mother of two wonderful daughters, Bashiya and Sierra. And she has three grandbabies, Kalia, DeShawn, and Kevin. And we never hear about them, by the way. At least not more than 10 to 15 times a day. I want to give you a little bit of a, just a timeline of Tracy and where her career started and where we are today. So in 2000, in 2000, Tracy started BLET at the Durham Police Department Police Academy. And in 2001, she joined the Creedmore Police Department, and that was her first job. And that was her first job as a police officer. She didn't stay there very long because she heard all the wonderful things about Morrisville. So in 2002, Tracy came to Morrisville. She's been here since 2002. Between 2002 and 2013, she achieved her intermediate certificate and her advanced certificate, which are pretty difficult milestones for police officers. She also earned her associate's degree from Mount Olive. And for 14 years, she served as a master officer and a senior officer. In 2013, she transferred to criminal investigations. Tracy and I have had a lot of opportunities to talk about different cases. We think very similar a lot of times when it comes to investigations. And I've always known that I can trust Tracy to look at investigations in a certain way to give a very objective view. 2016, Tracy was promoted to sergeant, where she served over the criminal investigations division. And then in 2019, she was promoted to lieutenant. So obviously, in that timeframe, her value and what she gave to the community and to the police department was really highlighted. And 2023 is when she started to serve as the interim police captain. When Captain Preddy retired, only a few months later, Tracy was eligible to retire in December. And she stayed. And I think that speaks volumes to two things. One, to the town. I think every time we have a retirement, it speaks to the culture that the town of Morrisville has built, where people want to be here and they want to retire here. But to make a decision when you could go home to stay also speaks volumes. And it also speaks volumes to Tracy and her commitment to the town and to all these men and women that you see in the back of the room tonight. So some of you may not know, but Tracy is also a business owner. And in 2016, Tracy started her own cleaning business. A lot of police officers and firefighters do that, right? On, on our spare time, we run small businesses and make a little side hustle. But that's not, that wasn't the root of her business. See, in this cleaning business, Tracy hired battered women because her heart was to lift up women, especially in very difficult circumstances, to help them rebuild their lives. So what I'm speaking of in this is Tracy's heart. I'm not sure there could be a bigger impact on not only our community, because Tracy spent a lot of time, she's the, who I consider to face of the franchise. We can't really go out in public without folks knowing her. Everybody knows Tracy. But even more importantly, at the position that she is in now, you oftentimes, in order to serve our community, we serve the folks inside of our building. And I think that, that's where Tracy may have made the biggest impact, is because there's not a day that goes by where there's not a revolving door at her office where folks come in daily. Sometimes it's with a big smile on their face, just to say good morning or good afternoon, or sit down and have a conversation. Or sometimes those conversations start with tears and a closed door, because they know they can trust her to give advice or just be someone to listen. This happens all of the time, not some of the time. It happens daily. Tracy's been known to find housing for police officers. The, the list just goes on and on. I can tell you for me personally, as a police chief, it's very important to have people who you align with, but also don't necessarily think the way you think. And it allows you to see those corners that you may not see yourself. And that's where I've always trusted Tracy, is because she will, I usually get the look, like, we might all just think about that a little bit longer. And, and I get that look very often. And I appreciate that, because that allows us to make sure that we're making a well-informed decision. And she's never been afraid to do that. And a lot of times, I, I really think that speaks volumes. A lot, a lot of people won't do that. Tracy's dedication to all the men and women here, as well as the ones who could not be here tonight, her commitment and dedication to the town, commitment and dedication to me, and all those that she works with, is just, I don't think that I really have the words that describes that value. So Tracy, I'm so proud of you. I appreciate you. And the beautiful thing behind this and, and with her leaving is, if you look at all these people here wearing black and gray, Tracy's not leaving, because she left a very strong impact on everybody here, as well as those who couldn't be here today. So Tracy will be here, even though she's at home rocking that little baby, that grandbaby. So Tracy, I'm proud of you. We're very thankful for your service.
Thank you.
I know, I'd like to share a few thoughts, and I think others in the council will as well. It just goes to show what's happening this evening is that Morrisville is a family and a culture within departments, across departments. It speaks volumes that the departments came to support these two retirees. And as I mentioned, Nancy was kind of behind the scenes. Tracy's been very much front and center on patrol and then managing and now helping the rest of the team be successful. Can't thank you enough for making the town a better place, a safer place. And I wish you all the best as you enjoy your grandbabies. Who would like to be next? How about Councilmember Skrogan Johnson, followed by Councilmember Ralph?
So it'd be easier if we went down, because I'm a process person, as it's already been identified tonight. So thank you so much for everything that you've provided to the town and the people and your, you know, coworkers. We wouldn't be as safe or as kind and welcoming if it wasn't for people like you behind the scenes, helping others understand the emotional needs and balance that is needed in your job. Because emotional intelligence is something that you can't always grow. It comes from within. It's clear that you're a leader that has strong emotional intelligence and you're connecting people so that they're stronger. And gosh, we're just gonna miss you. I mean, it's just, it, it won't always be direct, but that, the echo will be there. So I really do appreciate everything that you've done for the town and know that your family's still here. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, just to echo the sentiments of my colleague. I've known you for a number of years, considering you're a very good friend. I learn a lot from all the leaders of all of our departments, but really just enjoy our time together and just so grateful for your exemplary service to our outstanding department. I, I can't begin to thank you enough. And I just wish you all the best with your family and hope that you come back and visit us at certain times, if you have time. And, you know, thank you so much for everything you've done as a police officer, but more importantly, as a part of the Morrisville family. And you'll always be a part of our family.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Protam Garamella, please.
You know, I think it's nice to have nights like this where you can look back and kind of see your whole career as, and hear about it through the eyes of other people. And you're, you know, Chief Acosta, it was so moving when he spoke about what you've meant to him and what you've meant to the department. And I think that, you know, that he's right, that when you look at all the people that showed up here to thank you and to, you know, to honor your service, I think that's your legacy for our town. And you're leaving a legacy in our town and a legacy in the world with, with your business and, and helping battered women. That's, that's amazing. And so, you know, I, I don't know what to say beyond thank you, but thank you so much. I think that you're, you know, you're, you'll be gone, but you'll never really be gone, because every single one of these people has a little piece.
Mayor Protam Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
I think a couple of thoughts that come to my mind is Chief Acosta said she's a mother and a grandma first. The important thing when I see her is the grace and the love, that, you know, very welcoming. You don't look like, you know, a police officer, I would say, like, who is always, you know, serious and this one always so welcoming. And, you know, seen you over the years, always a smile. Never seen you angry, I would say that, at least. I don't know, Pete, I don't know if you agree with that or not, but I've never seen her.
I know when she's angry.
Yeah. So, and, and the fact is, I was just checking with Brandon on, we have 48 police officers in Morrisville Police Department. And I was counting, we have close to 22 people here. And that is a testimony of who you are, because they might be working, but they took time to come. And by the way, I didn't get parking, so I parked in the electric car. So no, no one gives me a ticket there, okay? Mine's an electric car, by the way. So, but, but the key is, I know you went through a lot, you know, you had your times and that really struck me. I don't want to talk about that, but I, it's, it's very personal to me at that time. And I know that will continue forever, that will never go away. But I am very, very grateful for sticking through. And I'm now just looking at the people here. I know next is Officer Rodriguez. And everyone is retiring, you know? So like, we need to have a party to basically get everyone to know each other. And Lee Croft, you know, like, he doesn't give me his bike still, you know? That's a different issue. But nevertheless, I would say thank you for all that you do. And what the chief has talked about, the other phase of what you're doing is really commendable, you know? I'm, I'm very appreciative. And I'm sure the community that you are serving there, they will really appreciate it. And it's our loss there, you know, benefit, because now you can focus on them more and I would just, which is needed a lot. Thank you, everything that you do.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Thank you so much for your service to the town of Morrisville. And I was not aware of your very impressive career until Chief Acosta put it out there. What is more impressive to me is your, you giving back to the community with your business and hiring survivors of domestic violence. So I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So at first, I have to thank the chief for reminding me that Tracy started here in 2002. See, I shouldn't have looked at you either. I'm sorry. Because I can't remember, Tracy's one of those people I feel like I have known a long time. And 22-plus years is a long time. But Tracy is one of those people I feel like I've known forever. And more importantly, she's one of those people, Tracy, you are one of those people that folks gravitate toward. Mayor Protam Garamella said, your smile, that definitely, your smile lights up a room. But you are so compassionate and welcoming and just a loving person that folks gravitate towards you. And I'm lucky to be one of those people that has known you for so long. So thank you. And as I said earlier tonight, you know, what we all do, we all think about that we want to leave a place better than we found it. And you have been instrumental in bringing our Morrisville Police Department to where it is today, Tracy. You and I am so proud of the work that you have done all these years to create this organization that I am so proud of. And thank you for your service to our community, where never a day have I felt unsafe in this community. And that's because of you. And so, as sad as I am right now, I am so happy for you. This is a well-deserved retirement. This is the goal we all want in life, is to get to a place where we can retire and be with our family. And I am so envious that you have these beautiful grandbabies to go to be with now all the time. So you do that and you have a wonderful retirement. And you know, you, and you know this better than me, once a member of this family, always a member of this family. So we wish you all the best and thank you for your service. Our citizens are grateful. I know they are, whether they, they know it or not, they are grateful for the work that you have done, because it is a fabulous place to live and a safe place to live. So thank you so much.
If you two could please come up to the plaque. Stand right there. That's for you? Would you like to say a few words, say to you, gathering? Pete, you want to stay up here with her?
I just want to say.
No heckling.
I just want to say thank you to the Morrisville community for allowing me to serve 22 years here. It has really been a lot.
Okay. The teams come up for a picture? Counsel, if you can come forward for. I was debating whether or not we should all just go back to where you guys were. You're gonna have to organize us, Laura. Would each officer like to say something? Kidding.
We have stories to tell, but we'll do that.
Oh my. I saw you waving from the back. You probably have more room on this side. Want to shift some people? Are we good, Laura? Only four for you. Okay, one more hand. Hey David, be well. Okay, well, that was very meaningful and important to say goodbye in an appropriate way to those two great people, part of our family. We'll miss them, but we will also see them. There are two briefing items this evening, both scheduled for council action on July 9th. First, we'll have Michelle Stiegl, Planning Director, she's going to come up and facilitate actually both of the items.
Good evening, counsel. The next item on your agenda is the Stirrup-Iron Creek feasibility study, and Danielle Kittredge is back with us this evening in her new role with the Integrated Mobility Division with NCDOT, and she will be presenting this item to you. As a reminder, this project is the product of grant funding by NCDOT. Did also want to know that it was fully funded at 100%, so this project and study has been done at no cost to the town. With that, want to hand it over to Danielle to give the presentation.
Welcome back. Your name and your role for the record, please.
Well, Danielle Kittredge with NCDOT. So I did have the opportunity to come back and help bring this project to the end. This is a presentation on the final study that will be coming back to you for acceptance. So just as a presentation overview, we'll talk about the background, the timeline, the evaluation of the alternatives and the recommendations, as well as some next steps. So this area on the screen right here, the study area that was looked at, this alignment for Stirrup-Iron Creek Greenway is in the town's comprehensive transportation plan. So it does begin on the south side at Aviation Parkway, crosses over Airport Boulevard about the middle of the screen, and then does connect into Mill Spring Greenway as well as Carrington Mill Boulevard. As Michelle has mentioned, this project was, the study was funded through NCDOT. This has been about a year-long timeline for the project. It did include a field visit, as well as, we did have a steering committee made up of representatives from a variety of town departments. There were stakeholder interviews primarily with Wake County, based on the location of the greenway and some of the property that's owned, as well as their conservation area, Town of Cary with regard to utilities, as well as connections to planned or future greenways. And there was one public engagement component to this, there was an in-person engagement as well as an online survey. So a few highlights of the corridors mentioned, it does connect, this future greenway does connect into the Mill Spring Greenway, it has access to existing and proposed places of employment, services, residential development, some that are existing, some coming in the future, and then also looking at this corridor as potentially serving commuters as well as recreational users, and then opportunities to consist, connect to existing and future parks, opportunities for wildlife viewing. This is in an area that is, you know, it's a wet area, there's wetlands, there's a lot of opportunity for wildlife along this corridor as well, future connection to the proposed triangle bikeway, as well as other connections with multi-use paths and side paths throughout the town. So on December 2nd, as a part of the tree lighting event, there was a table set up to engage with individuals, to let them know about the study that was going on. Some of the feedback was, you know, that people weren't really familiar with the Mill Spring Greenway that currently exists, you know, just also interested in a variety of other connections with greenways and having greenways connect more. And then also with this particular study area, thinking about and making sure safety in the crossing of Airport Boulevard and at Sorrel Grove Church Road are considered with the design of the project, if it gets to that point. For the online survey, it was open for about a month. With the survey, there is an appendix that does have all of the survey questions and responses, there were 36 individuals that participated. One of the questions highlighted here is how would you expect to access the future greenway? So you see bike and walk, but then also drive and park is rather high. And, you know, this also leads to some consideration to trailhead parking that might be, you know, needed along the greenway. You may also see too, as there's more connections, maybe driving and parking isn't, you know, as high as an option for people. But also too, you know, this also speaks to the potential, you know, recreational aspect of the greenway as well. So that was something that was considered throughout the study too, is some considerations for trailhead parking. And then also too, there was, people could indicate, you know, what kinds of things would you connect to along the greenway? And, you know, trying to identify too, thinking about, well, where would people want to go, but also what would people want to access as well? And there was, you know, desire for additional destinations, and people included things like ice cream. So, you know, trying to get to different places and make it a fun experience as well. So for the evaluation of the alternatives, the report does go through a variety of different things that were analyzed, and I should also mention too, I know we have VHB all over the slides as well, the consulting firm was VHB that did work on this particular study as well. So I am here also presenting on kind of behalf of the study that they had worked on too, so I did want to mention that. And in terms of the report itself, looking at different opportunities and barriers analysis, I won't go into detail with all of these here, but it does highlight a variety of considerations that are outlined in the study itself, thinking about connecting to different destinations and points of interest, where are existing and planned bicycle and pedestrian facilities, connectivity to transit routes and stops, potential economic development opportunities, environmental protection, looking at impacts to the environment, also topographic barriers, pedestrian crossings. Floodplain constraints is a major issue along this corridor, also the Wake County, there's Wake County Conservation Area, utilities. This particular alignment does appear that it was selected because it went along a sewer corridor, and in this particular area, it does create some challenges, so looking at different crossings related to the sewer line that exists in this area, and then impacts to landowners. So the study broke the entire segment up, the entire corridor up into five segments. Each segment has one, two, up to three different alternatives that were looked at. I'll go over, be focusing on the preferred alignments that were identified for each of these, but this does show a little bit about some of the considerations that were being made with this. And in terms of those considerations, some of the things I've already mentioned a little bit, but really looking at the floodplain, that's going to be a particular challenge in terms of whether or not there are boardwalks that are needed, and if you do have boardwalks, boardwalks going over sewer lines is not very compatible, because they do have to be removed in order to do maintenance on the other side of the sewer line. So a lot of thought also went into minimizing the amount of boardwalks and sewer crossings that would potentially be needed for the greenway alignment, as well as looking at existing easements, if there are developments that are, that have dedicated greenway easements or that are under construction with greenway easements, making sure that these, this particular alignment ties into those, so that consideration was also given, as well as looking at the terrain. So there's, this does follow along with Stirrup-Iron Creek that goes in this particular area, so there's mention of staying along more of the ridge line of the stream, it will also help from minimize potential earthwork that's needed, and help with AD accessibility as well, with having less earthwork there too, to accommodate that. You know, looking at, in terms of different types of structures, I've mentioned boardwalks, there may, you know, thinking about where there might be bridge structures that are needed, if does have to cross a stream, as well as considerations to making sure there are multiple access points along the greenway. The corridor is rather long, and if you can only enter or exit on the ends, you know, what are those opportunities in the middle as well, for people to be able to access the greenway from a variety of points? And then avoiding potential utility conflicts, as mentioned, there was a lot of thought that was put into the, where the location of the various sewer lines were, that did feed into the recommended alternatives as well. So in terms of the alternatives, it does focus on, we have greenways and side paths, bridges and boardwalks. Throughout, in the study itself, there are cut sheets for each of the alternatives, and it does go into detail in terms of where would a green, would it be a greenway, a side path, how long would a bridge or a boardwalk need to be as well, but that was the focus for that. In terms of segment one, this is starting on the south side at Aviation Parkway, again, I'm going to focus on, there's going to be other lines that are on the maps, but the one that's shown is just going to be the preferred alignment here. And this one is alternative A that is shown, and rather than taking more of the northern route, which would require boardwalks and impact to the wetlands, the alternative A avoids having to have any types of boardwalk structures and sewer line crossings. So that was the focus here of segment one. In segment two, there is only one alternative here, and this is primarily driven by new development that is happening in this area, some that have already dedicated greenway easements, or will be constructing portions of the greenway. So there's not a lot to add to this particular segment. It does also show on here too, there are some connectors that continue to, that are proposed throughout the greenway as well, to help with some of the additional connectivity, so a little bit of that is highlighted here as well. This just shows during the field visit, we got to walk through the woods in a few different places, so the consultant did put a kind of a superimpose, what would a greenway look like through this particular area? This is just north of the segment two there. So for segment three, this one had the most alternatives. There was one that was completely removed, that went a little bit north, took more of a northern route, and just based on the impacts to the wetlands, the cost that it would take to construct that alternative, it was removed, and so that's why you don't see an alternative B on here. Alternative C, which is this purple line in the middle, was the recommended alignment. There is secondary alignment as well that kind of mirrors it, and the reason for this is although this route does avoid needing any boardwalks or sewer line crossings, to stay on the ridge line, this is around the Holiday Inn, there's more structural analysis that is needed to look at how best to accomplish that, and whether or not there would be impacts to the parking that is on the site. And so that's why this is still based as the preferred alternative due to having a lesser distance and not having to cross a driveway, but there are some things highlighted in the report in terms of additional analysis needed for this particular alignment. And then that secondary alignment, it does go around the Holiday Inn, that's shown at this kind of square or rectangle right here in the middle. And this does, even with this alternative, although it avoids boardwalks, it avoids the sewer line crossing, there's still going to be a need for a retaining wall associated with it. So these are just, these are all very helpful things that came out of the feasibility study that can also help guide the direction or decisions moving into a next step as well. So for the fourth segment, we did just have one alternative for this as well, and that's what's shown on the screen. This is really driven by, the original alignment was going to show the greenway going, continuing along the, the stream, the stream corridor, but the stream corridor is very constrained. And then we also considered a cut through on Concourse Village Drive, but that's a, it's a private street, and then there are some sight-visibility crossings on Sorrel Grove Church Road. So the focus was a side path to be able to loop around and to make that connection back over to the other side of Sorrel Grove Church Road. So the fifth segment, there's a lot that's kind of going on in here, we have alternatives and connectors, and I think the thing to best highlight here is with the preferred alignment, the green line right in the middle, there are additional supporting connectors that you'll see in two more slides as well with the overall alignment. That is why this alternative A, which gives another option of connecting into the Mill Spring Greenway, was supported, because there's also supporting connector options in this area. And there's a variety of considerations in terms of, I know we've got kind of a squiggle line for a connector down here by Markham Drive, you know, that's future consideration, if there's park planning, considering of how that connection may happen or may be a So overall, with the preferred conceptual alignment is shown here on the screen, so it does not include any of the other alternatives, just preferred alignments with the connectors. And we are looking at in the five segments, about three miles, three and a half with the connectors. It does include some significant roadway crossings with Aviation Parkway and Airport Boulevard, as well as some crossing at Sorrel Grove Church Road, and a potential pedestrian hybrid beacon crossing on Paramount Parkway. One of the things that isn't necessarily highlighted in a lot of great detail in this presentation, but it does cover it more in the report itself, is a highlight, highlights the connection to other future greenways that are shown in the comprehensive transportation plan or side paths as well, and that this adds to the connectivity of everything together. The thing here though, is on the last bullet point, there is a big number of a planning level cost, it's about $15 million for the, in terms of thinking about the overall cost of the greenway itself. Feasibility studies are helpful in terms of understanding whether it is CIP planning, whether it's looking at grants in the future, to understand what that cost is. And another reason too, for the different, five different segments, is there can be different approaches to, you know, pursuing the greenway in this area, whether you go, you know, one segment at a time, a couple of segments, based on different situations or needs, so there's that opportunity as well. And I mentioned earlier too, there are cut sheets for all of the alignments, all the alternatives in the report itself, so it does cover in terms of length or boardwalk structures or impacted parcels, to provide some of that, as well as some of the different challenges that are associated with them. And then the last thing to highlight are the next steps. So we did the town council presentation this evening, it'll come back on July 9th for a resolution for acceptance of the Stirrup-Iron Creek Greenway feasibility study. NCDOT, Integrated Mobility Division, does have also a final review to complete as a part of their kind of review and the funding of the study itself. And then just looking ahead at next steps in terms of what happens after the feasibility study. And one thing to consider is in the next update to the Morrisville Comprehensive Transportation Plan, considering recommendations to changes to the alignment to Stirrup-Iron Creek Greenway, and incorporating that into the CTP update. Also watching for development opportunities or grant funding opportunities to implement sections or all of it, that is, you know, different types of options there. And then, you know, also whether or not it is moving forward with a priority section. The report does recommend moving from a north to south implementation, because of some of the different activities and the potential for the connectivity to the Stirrup, I mean, the Mill Spring Greenway, however, there are different opportunities that arise at different times, so those are some of the different considerations as well. And then the last slide here with regard to And then the last slide here with regard to implementation is design cost. And really the next step out of a feasibility study is moving all or a piece into 30% design or 60 or final design. And so this is also a helpful aspect too in thinking about or planning, what does that cost look like? So really the entire, the entire thing could have about $3 million to be able to do complete design for the entire greenway. And again, these are high level numbers, but I think they are also important in that planning ahead and thinking about that as well. So with that, I'd ask if there's any questions.
I'm sure we will. No one's raised their things yet, but I'll start us then. So I just want to confirm that accepting this does not encumber the funding. You showed us some big numbers. This is just accepting a plan.
Yes, this is, and it's just a study that says we've looked at these things. This is recommendations to alignments. This is what we think costs can be, and it just helps inform next decisions. But yeah, you're not agreeing to any, anything, just accepting the study.
Okay, wonderful. I like to say this is really a great study and this is going to be a great greenway. It'll be so helpful to our non-motorized connectivity network to have a north-south greenway east of Chapel Hill Road. This will be more than a recreation greenway. I think this is going to be a commuter corridor. Not many people said that in the study, but I think it'll become one as a lot of people really realize the benefit of this, going all the way down from Aviation all the way up to Perimeter Park and stuff. It's going to be really nice. I've been to the Mills Spring Greenway a number of times. People should look at those photos because the green, greenway that already exists, it's beautiful and it's right along the water. I think that's one of our hidden gems in the northern part of town. So I support moving forward with these next steps to get design funded and completed so we can leverage dollars from other sources and provide this great amenity for our region. The next steps, as you indicated, I'm supportive of those, starting in the north, I think would be great. So those are my thoughts on the presentation. Great job and thank you VHB for all their hard work as well. Mayor Protam Garamella, please. Oh, and then I see.
I think, so, first of all Danielle, I'm not, I'm happy to see you, but I'm not happy with the tag of ncdot.com. And, and also I did not know like Michelle and yours have the same phone number there.
Oh.
Or you have any plans, you know, Michelle?
I, I did not add that in there. That was a, Michelle took credit for that one.
Okay. So this is over and beyond what the MacRiman is making like a sidewalk on the Crabtree, right? Which goes straight down. Because there is a footbridge they're making as part of the Marshall Carpenter Extension.
I'm just going to go back up to.
No, go to the different slide, like which was a lower ones.
You're going to go maybe more to?
Yeah, this one, yeah. So where you see the Aviation, right? So, and Dominion, so like where you see the Aviation Parkway, there's one more segment that is coming that's a walkway as part of the Aviation Extension?
Oh.
And the cost expanding, yeah.
Oh yeah, so in terms of a side path along with, yeah, a side path. Yeah, that's currently one of the betterments that the town had asked for with the Aviation Parkway widening project.
Okay, so, so why does it not show here because that's part of the?
Oh yeah, so we did not show in terms of this is Stirrup Iron Creek Greenway only. So the report itself will show the, and I think there might be a slide in here too that shows in terms of the existing or future side paths. But that is detailed in the report as a, as a connection as well as the connection that would be passed out of the town limits that could also connect to like Crabtree Park or into the Cary Greenway system. So, yes.
And, and the alternate B, is that an option or is it very high cost? Because that actually really touches more to the water line, right?
It does. I mean, it is an option to pursue. I think the challenge, more of the challenges related to the sewer line crossing, having a structure over the sewer line because you do have to then, they need to get to their side, remove it. And then it disrupts the ability to use the greenway. And then also this particular area being in the Wake County, kind of the Wake County property as well, there's a no net fill. So it does increase the cost to be able to do construction because you do have to remove fill from another location.
I really liked the slide, but I would also like to see Michelle if we can have this incorporated with our greenway system of where all it touches it, you know, because that at least puts a perspective. Now I'm like thinking, where's the other greenways that we have existing that would be touching these one? But I love it. And the last but not the least, I, the, the property that, the Markham's property, where does that fit into this? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that way, yeah.
Uh huh. And this one is purposely just a squig, a squiggle line in that location. That is an opportunity, more so notating an opportunity for a connection through that area depending on future planning that happens there. It is shown just as a connector, so that would be an option or opportunity in the future.
So, so the alternate A underneath segment five, is that in plan or is it like, because that's where the beauty is, where you're walking around the water?
Yeah, and I think this one was, yeah, preferred too because you do have that opportunity to connect around the water. So all of these, any of these options do require additional study and engineering and design work. So the feasibility study looks a little bit, starts to look a little more deeper than what we had in the Conference of Transportation Plan.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you. This is filling a gap of the town that is not walkable and very accessible by other than motor vehicles. So this is a really exciting kind of way of looking at it. Now, in the back of my head, I'm thinking, funding, funding. So is most of the segments crossing over built out land so that the property owners would not be responsible for creating, like when you're developing a parcel, if you have a plan with a greenway on it, you're responsible for building the stub or at least contributing money towards the building of that stub of the greenways? Most of this developed?
So we do have, I mean, with segment two, there's a good portion that's being built with existing development. The other, and I would say when you start looking at this kind of, you know, the segment one and then kind of going up, a lot of that is, you know, there's some Wake County properties. So there was the opportunity to whether or not stuff is on Wake County property or on private property and taking that into consideration as well and some conversations with, you know, is that even an option to consider too? And then when you are up around, we're just calling this like horseshoe shaped lake as well, you are also on, on Wake County property. So I think there's a variety of different situations, either built land, might be other publicly owned land. You might see some redevelopment opportunities, but probably not a lot of new development necessarily with, with the different pieces. So I think that kind of touches on a little.
It does, it does. You know, we'll have to study this further, no pun intended, to find out more about that breakdown. But I was also looking at the cost estimates. Usually when you're building your greenways, you need to get right of way. And was the right of way acquisition cost considered in some of these estimates? Or is that in addition to the construction?
So the cost estimating tool, which is going to be high level, does assume some right of way cost in there with this. You know, there's also the opportunity for, you know, easements versus right of way acquisition as well. And then there might be some trade offs versus something being on public property versus private property and, and where to, you know, thread that line as well. But it would include some of the right of way or easement acquisitions.
Well, overall, I think this is a great start. We really need good information in order to have shovel ready projects for grant applications and so forth. And I think this is a really helpful tool that we have that we can use for many years to come. And most importantly, thank you for all your work to the town and congratulations. And it made me very sad to read that last slide. Just saying. Thank you so much.
Well, I will say one good thing about this too is my understanding is there's a trail, a trails map for North Carolina, and they are looking at updating it maybe on an annual basis. So studies like these that get funded by NCDOT may also get incorporated into that map, which is also another helpful step in pointing to things in terms of grant applications as well.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
I'm so happy to see you. So my main concern is about the grade level crossing across Airport Boulevard. I, you know, I understand that it says that it would be some type of signalized crossing, but I have to be honest with you, I think we're going to end up doing a pedestrian walkway over Airport Boulevard if this project comes to fruition. I don't see any scenario in which a signalized crossing is safe for pedestrians. So I don't know if we should just start building that into the project or what, you know, what the process is by which that can get factored in. But I do think that there's a very real possibility that that would be part of the cost of a project like this.
Yeah, and I think with future, I mean, in terms of, you know, future design, variety of different considerations. In terms of the feasibility study, we also did look at, because you have the streams to whether or not you could also do something at the, at the stream level, but kind of the overhead for, for more of the tunnel that goes under Airport Boulevard was not high enough. So we also looked at that option and the original alignment that was in the Conference of Transportation Plan, so kind of almost a mid-block crossing. So this would at least cross at a traditional signalized intersection, but it is certainly something that can be looked at in more detail and safety when it goes in the further design. Thanks.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
No, I really appreciate all of the different alternatives and just, I think to the extent, I think Mayor Protam kind of alluded to, I, I, I'm on the greenways almost every day. And the thing I love about it is how it can connect us to different parts of the town, you know? So like, like tomorrow I want to run, I want to go to the Church Street Park, but I can't. So I'm going to run and then there's a little strip road I can go through the greenway. And the same thing on, you know, going to the greenway, either on Indian Creek or the one, either that you connect towards Crabtree Creek or Morrisville Park. And sometimes I wish there was a greenway that would go like alongside Preston because sometimes I go on the road, I have to go up Morrisville Parkway and through Park West. But I think to the extent we can see all the different places in the town that it can connect us to, that's the real power of the greenway for my, you know? And, you know, eight or nine years ago, when I would run, there weren't as many greenways. And so I would run on the road. And it's so much of a difference when you can go and see different parts of the town. So I think to the extent that we can have that and have it tracked in our apps or the greenway maps, that's just so powerful for residents. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Hey Danielle, it is good to see you. I was very sad when I found out you had left us, but I am happy for you. So I did have a question about, you know, I agree with Councilmember Robati and there's going to be some risk involved in that crossing Airport Boulevard. So, but I'm sure, well, I hope the engineers can figure out a design that will work. So on slide 20 where it shows that, yeah, so let me just confirm, alternate D is the yellow?
It is the, yeah, alternate D is the yellow line.
I know you guys are going to think I'm silly, but I'm kind of concerned about that route because you're taking it right by Hooters. You talked about a retaining wall there?
You'd need a small, based on the elevation change between the property, a small retaining wall. And I think this option, just knowing even alternative A and C's constraints, the consultant felt it was necessary to also just have another backup alternative as things get further into design. So that's why this is on here, something to further explore. I don't know that I want to rule it out 100% right now and maybe something that comes back is ruling out later.
Okay, I mean, I, maybe I'm being too sensitive, but I can imagine young mothers with little kids walking by here probably wouldn't want to be walking by Hooters. I know I wouldn't prefer it myself. And try, you know, kids asking, well, what are Hooters? And I just don't think that's, unless you could just put some sort of wall along there or if it was, it's kind of hard to tell from the Google whether it is covered by trees or you can go a route where it's all in the trees.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, the options can be explored, you know, further with, with the design. It was recommend, you know, alternative C as the primary one to focus on if that one from a, you know, a structural and just other construction design aspect becomes sort of infeasible or cost prohibitive or has an impact potentially too much to, to parking, then that's where, you know, looking at a different alternative might be needed.
Okay, so this was a little confusing because it does say alternative D and that's bulleted up at the top, but then in the verbiage below, and maybe you said this in your presentation, I just wasn't paying attention. Alternative D is recommended secondary to alternative C. So is alternative C the middle route?
Yeah, the middle one. So it's going to be this, this purple line, so it's the middle route.
Okay.
Yeah, there was just a little concern that once something gets into design, there might be a few more challenges than anticipated. So wanting to give the town something else to consider in terms of how to get connected over to, connect to Airport Boulevard.
All right, thank you.
So kind of reading between the lines of the last comment, I would say if there's an opportunity also to add trees for helping the buffer as much of this as we can be a tree lined greenway, that's also beautiful, except when you're next to the water because you want to be able to see the water. So I don't see anyone else with comments at this time. A really comprehensive report, lots of different alternatives going forward. So we're scheduled to vote on accepting or not accepting this at our next meeting on July 9th. If anyone has any other questions, can reach out to Michelle. Danielle or Michelle, did you have anything else to close us out?
Nothing else to add, just thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson, please.
Everything's been said Danielle. I'm thrilled with the study. I'm thrilled that we're going to move forward and accepting the study and that obviously the details when we get, we get there. So thank you for being here. Yes, we never did say goodbye. It's good to see you. Now that you're on the other side, don't forget where you've been.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for looking out for us.
I was, I was thinking the same, next time you come, you come with the funding too.
Yeah. That's a big, that's a big ask there.
Yeah, whatever you can do to help us on the betterment side of things. That's wonderful. Okay, thank you so much. We're going to have Planning Director Stiegel facilitate our next one as well.
So, good evening again. The next item on your agenda is the Morrisville Parkway Access Management Study. A preliminary study and recommendations were presented to Town Council at two prior meetings earlier this year. And this evening Andrew Top with VHB will be presenting the final proposed study and report to Town Council. Do want to recognize a couple other members in the audience, Reggie Scales with VHB. Reggie Scales with VHB is also here this evening. And Crystal Odom from Campo. And just to note that this is another grant-funded project. This one being completed with only a $13,000 match by the town. So did want to recognize Campo for that and recognize them for their partnership in this study. With that, I will hand it over to Andrew Top with VHB, who is going to be presenting to you.
Thank you and good evening, Council. Pleasure being here to be able to present the results of the study. I know you've been exposed to parts of it along the way and happy to go into more detail here as we go. And so this was a partnership between Campo and the town and we had plenty of other partners that assisted along the way. But ultimately, we were looking at access management along the corridor and then how we could reduce, potentially reduce conflicts, improve safety. And then a really large part of this was multimodal connectivity, walking along the corridor, across the corridor, cycling as well. So really looking at all modes throughout the corridor. And it, and, and as the timeline shows here, really about a 10, 11-month process, starting towards the end of the summer, wrapping up and into the final stages here where we have the report posted for public comment. So a key part of this project was the steering committee, Technical Steering Committee, who was invital towards providing out, input and helping assure that the study aligned with the goals that were stated in our kickoff meetings. But just providing feedback throughout and the town of Cary was also a partner. Wake County Schools, we had input from the principal of Morrisville Elementary right along the corridor. And I should say that this quarter does extend from Davis Drive on the west side to NC 54, which is real vital east-west corridor through the town. So just to touch on a few of the public outreach strategies throughout the process. Phase one occurred during the fall. Had, had outreach at a, at a couple of events, including the trick-or-treat event, the trail event at the park and also had a pop-up event at the Morrisville Aquatic Center. About 164 individuals responded to our public survey where we asked, what do you think about the corridor? How do you feel walking, driving along the corridor? Got excellent feedback that really set the stage for this, this process as we really rolled along. And phase two was, occurred in the March-April timeframe where we were able to post some illustrations of some concepts and some recommendations along the corridor, cross-section improvement suggestions. And we got excellent feedback, feedback on very specific topics that were shown in these illustrations. So we were, felt like we really got a good, quite a bit of input from, from various sources and town staff did an excellent job just getting the word out and reaching out to apartment complexes and, and property owners along the corridor as well to make sure that their interests were being, being heard. So just to touch briefly on the methodology, the public outreach was certainly a critical piece, but there was also quite a bit of just data collection, review and reports. There were traffic impact studies for developments that have been constructed recently, particularly along the east side of the corridor. Crash data was vitally important. NC DOT provided historic data so that we were able to really look at what intersections had some, you know, spiked some high trends. But also just a very important piece was just blocking the corridor for as part of a road safety assessment meeting, members of the steering committee out there and the project management team. And just, we were there right when the Morrisville Elementary was letting out. So seeing all the students really walk across there to the Cross Timbers Apartment Complex on the, on the east side, a lot of parents were waiting over there. So really to see everything in action, see how the traffic control officer moves, moves people back and forth or the staff member. So that, that, and then of course, a traditional traffic capacity analysis, looking at delay and level of service and that sort of thing. And as we looked at intersections that might have spiked high delay or congestion or just had a high number of crashes, it became very clear that our focus tended to be on, on five areas and that's well, it's kind of spend some time on the next series of slides. But the endpoints, of course, around the school was another kind of hotspot for activity. The Aquatic Center, the series of closely spaced median openings as well as the Park West intersection. But, and in addition, so from a corridor-wide perspective, we, we, we had some just general recommendations along the entire corridor. And handling walking and, and cycling along the corridor. We looked at a couple of different options. We looked at bike lanes along the way. Is there a possibility to re-stripe the existing width to then carve out space for bike lane? But it's just a little bit too tight with the 11-foot lanes there now. And ultimately, the, the team, as we moved along, really landed on these multi-use kind of side path on both sides, you know, in that eight to 10-foot range and depending on right-of-way availability and, and how, how tight, you know, you could have a planting strip in there of preferably five feet, but it's somewhere, it could be back of curb. And, and one of the other elements we heard loud and clear throughout the process is concerns of speed, vehicle speeds along the corridor. Very difficult to find gaps to cross for pedestrians. What can we do to, you know, slow vehicles down? So one, one, one thought that we did have that also provides a little bit of a visual cue to drivers is to add lane markings, a yellow and a white on the, on the outside of the lane that's six foot wide, which is your, your higher visibility markings that do, that do provide a bit of a lane narrowing to the driver. So has a, you know, subtle impact on driver speeds, but, but narrows that lane width a little bit that hopefully will get those high, high-speed vehicles to slow down a bit along the corridor. So starting at the very west end, Davis Drive. What, what popped up through our study and input, input received throughout is just the congestion at this intersection, particularly a heavy westbound right turn going towards RTP and to, into Durham in the morning in particular. The return southbound left, very, very heavy, wide crossings for pedestrians, just a lack of high-visibility crossings, pavement markings. So those were a couple of items that we, that we identified for this location at the west end. You know, the addition of that right turn lane off of Morrisville Parkway. North is to the left of the screen here and continuing towards RTP. And then that return southbound movement, creating a dual-left turn lane to then accommodate what is, what is a very, very heavy left turn volume onto Morrisville Parkway, particularly in the afternoon. And then high-visibility crosswalks on all four approaches, what we call lane-leading pedestrian intervals, which improve pedestrian safety by giving a pedestrian, when you hit the button, a chance to get into the crosswalk before the vehicle gets their green phase. So, you know, fairly low cost. And throughout, we were looking for low-cost options, all the way up to what we would think would be that longer term, which of course would require that additional funding, capital funding. And the green boxes indicate those short-term improvements that we hope could be implemented rather quickly, certainly within the next, you know, five years. And, and then the long, long term is more in that five to 10, depending on, you know, funding. So the second part is Morrisville Elementary. And there are two driveways that serve the elementary. And one thing that stood out was that heavy, heavy pedestrian, well over 100 pedestrians cross. It's our busiest pedestrian crossing anywhere on, on the corridor. Fortunately, there is a person out there that's very experienced that gets the kids to cross in a, in a group, kind of a moving school bus across the street. And it, it, and drivers yield for them. And it's a pretty, it's well, it's, it's very well-run in our observations. The challenge is, you know, after-school activities, you hit it at different times on a weekend where you don't have a person out there. It's very, very difficult to cross. We were just waiting cars, cars really go by without yielding to a marked crosswalk or pedestrian waiting to cross. So that was just something that really came up loud and clear. Also some challenges crossing towards where they, we go into the park. There's a lack of some left turn lanes. And then one, one overriding thing was the school, there might be opportunities to accommodate the queue onsite. There's some strategies that you can implement at schools to double stack, triple stack so that those parents that arrive early for pickup in the afternoon can store onsite rather than on Morrisville Parkway. So more detailed school studies are certainly a part of our recommendations as well. But ultimately, we landed at a, a full signal, full movement, a signalized crossing at the school's main entrance, Golden Horseshoe Circles across the street. We originally looked at some channelized islands and impartial access. And through additional study comments that we received, really went with a, the full signal at this location. It's a very wide crossing. And then again, the need for that pedestrian to cross outside of where you might have an assistant from a school while helping that movement. And then a pedestrian hybrid beacon, a signalized crossing at the, at the, the western driveway of the school as well, going to the park. So moving to the, the middle area towards the Morrisville Aquatic Center. This, these were the two locations that had the highest number of crashes at any unsignalized location. So that was one that we were really paying close attention to. Site distance, turn lanes, left turn lanes, there were a lot of rear-end crashes. There's a series of curves to the west as well that contributed to some runoff-the-road crashes. There was a high-speed runoff-the-road fatality along that corridor as well, along this stretch. So Black Ridge Street has a very, very heavy left turn volume going towards Creek Park Drive off of Morrisville Parkway, over 100 lefts that warrant a signal just by that left turn volume. And there's a demand for pedestrian crossing here. I, I think you have a lot of folks that take advantage of the Aquatic Center over there and whether it's recreation, being able to walk to a, to such a nice amenity along the corridor. But, but what we heard is very difficult to cross without a push-button, without a signal, without something to really stop cars. So that was something we really wanted to try to incorporate. So again, a, a full-access signal was our, part of our recommendation here. Some left turn improvements as well at Creek Park Drive and Black Ridge Street, kind of the east of the Aquatic Center. And then towards the west, you know, consider signalization in, in the future with channelization island. Again, there were some tough site distance for left turns and then, you know, if they could turn right and then go downstream, take advantage of the signal to the east or the west, you could accommodate that left turn in a, just kind of a rerouted manner. But again, a lot of these showed up as, as higher priority. We'd like to think, to, to put them in the, in the category of short-term improvements if the funding's available. Prior studies have also shown a need to kind of approve this intersection as well. Jumping to Park West Drive. What we heard here is, you know, there's some closely spaced median openings to, you know, congestion at, along NC 54 where it spills back and starts to block those intersections. I kind of noticed it as I was driving in tonight, spill back through that first intersection. And then just, just kind of a need for access management as well. So, and there have been a couple of, of westbound left turn lanes that were built as part of those developments that have gone in on the south side, Park West Village. And there was a need for the partner eastbound left turns opposite. So anytime you have a, a left-turning vehicle waiting in a through lane with a, you know, you know, 35, 40 mile an hour vehicle, there's more conflict. So having that left turn lane was, is a good way to kind of minimize those impacts for potential for rear-end collisions along the corridor. And then we, we recommended some, some channelization islands as well. The, the last area that we, we really wanted to focus in on is NC 54. And, and I will say that there are other studies that are being done along NC 54. Town of Cary's done some, NC DOT has done some, looking at it from a more holistic, long-term scenario. And, you know, additional through lanes, you know, getting it to a full four-lane section along, along stretch of, you know, through, through the town is, is on the list. And even a six lane has been looked at in some other areas. So, but without a doubt, the northbound left turn is, is, is very, very heavy. So that was one that we suggested a, adding a second left turn to really shorten that queue. You already have two receiving lanes on Morrisville Parkway, so that part's already done. It's just a matter of widening NC 54 itself. And also with doing that, there's a crosswalk missing on the, on the northern leg. You know, adding a high-visibility crosswalks across the board, adding those same leading pedestrian intervals that help improve yield compliance for pedestrians that are crossing. So that was another thing we wanted to take a look at. So those were kind of the highlights of, of, of illustrations along the corridor. And, you know, a lot of information here, but, but really wanted to hone in on some construction cost estimates. And this takes into account using NC DOT's rates, standard rates for these types of studies with, that includes inspection, administration, contract cost construction. So all the other elements, 45% they include for miscellaneous mobilization. But ultimately ended up with the short-term improvements running about $6 million, $6.4 million, and then the long-term at about $4.4 million. And some of these improvements are, you know, could, could be, should be done in conjunction with one another. If there's a rerouted left turn that takes it to a downstream, you know, need for a turn lane, you know, those would go in together. But a lot of the rest of them could be just done in isolation as there's an opportunity or maybe a developer, if there's different funding opportunities available, then that could, that could, that could open up, you know, putting together these improvements in, in pieces. So right now, we're, we're in the public comment period. Campo has it posted for public comments. So pulling in any information that we received there. And of course, the council meeting, and similar to the previous item, July 9th would be idea for the acceptance. And then once it's, moves forward, Campo will then take it back before their executive board for their, you know, final approval as well. So, you know, with that, really kind of the last bit of information is just the, you know, implementation, you know, funding, where do we go from here? And, you know, Michelle can add some additional input as well. But opportunities for grant funding, the report goes into detail with all the potential funding sources, whether it could be LAPD funding would be a logical source of funding for some of these improvements. I understand Campo's taking some applications here, you know, soon for that type of, these types of projects. So having a study in hand that's been approved definitely helps you, you know, get that, get the grant applications moving and, and really start to identify improvements moving forward. So with, with that, is there anything else that you want to add, Michelle?
Yes, just in terms of implementation, very much like your last item, this is a high-level study. And so in order to increase, increase opportunities for any grants, as Andrew indicated, a decent amount of design work is going to need to be done. So once the study is adopted by Campo, those are additional discussions that we're going to want to have with Town Council in terms of how to approach the project, funding for the project, what might be higher priorities to move forward with. I do recognize that this is a high-profile road. There's a lot of resident concern over this stretch of road. I drive it daily myself, so completely understand that from firsthand experience. But do want to make sure that, we kind of set expectations that, again, we're at that high-level study point in the process and it will likely still be years before you see some of this construction happening. But we'll come back to you with some implementation options and some discussions about what design work to kind of proceed with after the study is adopted.
Are you ready for questions, Stop? Like to recognize councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, could we go back to the, the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center page, please?
Sure.
So I noticed that there is a signalized intersection recommended where Black, Black Ridge Street crosses Morrisville Parkway. But there's also a signal recommended at Duck Pond Circle. That seems like it's going to be two signals very close together. And I'm just wondering about the possibility of that backing up traffic, you know, people blocking the grid because they're trying to get across. I'm just, would you usually see two signals? I'm just, would you usually see two signals that close together on a heavily trafficked road like this?
Yeah, that's a good question. So with, with the, you, you can and you do, we, we often like to space them, you know, at, you know, 800,000 foot intervals when we can. One thing that I'll point out about both of these signals, and in particular, the Duck Pond intersection, we're not talking, you know, NC 54, Davis Drive, where you have eight phases, very long, long, long cycle lengths, where it takes, you might sit there for two and a half minutes before it comes back around to your green. These are, these are two phase signals, very efficient, 60 seconds or, or more. And in, in, in particular, the Duck Pond, large, this signal probably doesn't actually stop Morrisville Parkway traffic unless a pedestrian really hits the button or somebody is sitting on a detector for, you know, 10 or 15 seconds. So generally, if you're turning right, it's fairly low volume on Duck Pond. You know, we, we talked about, well, can you make interconnections to other, other developments so that people could take advantage of it? But if you're just turning right out, you'll probably be able to find a gap within 10 or 15 seconds, and it never even switches to stop Morrisville Parkway. Again, if you're turning left into Duck Pond, unless you're, you really are sitting on a presence detector for, you know, 20, 30 seconds, it doesn't switch over. So that would be a signal that would be green 98% of the time. But when a pedestrian needs to get across, you're walking to the Aquatics Center, you have the opportunity for that push button at that, for those instances. And that's, you know, we, we went back and forth, could we do pedestrian hybrid beacons or just pedestrian only? You know, talked, and then we even looked at these rapid flashing beacons. But, you know, input from town staff and Towne and Carey's staff with a four lane road, it's probably not good enough for, for drivers to really properly yield. So ultimately landed at the full signal.
Yeah, I do 100% agree with that. And my other question is, I don't know if this was actually covered in this study, but the, down by Park West, where you're recommending that the, the left turn be curtailed out of some of the, out of what looks like some of the developments on that Pheasantwood Court and whatever the other road is, would there, are, are those connected developments in the back? Like, is there somewhere that people would be able, like, if they took some backroads, be able to make a left turn there? Or is it, is it just go down and make a U-turn? And that's now the only option?
Yeah, so certainly the, the downstream U-turn would be one option available to all of them. All of the Park West development to the south is very well interconnected to where you can go all the way south and then you can make a direct left at the signal to the west. So really good interconnectivity. I will say, Pheasantwood Court, you know, there's a few of those, you know, with the Triangle Badminton Club, some of the self-storage. Don't, they don't have as much interconnectivity, so they probably would have to rely on U-turns. But those are not particularly high generator traffic. The, the bigger, higher volume uses on the, on the south side would be able to connect to make a direct left.
I, I just want to make sure, I, the thing is that when you're talking about coming out of one of these places and going down to make a, make a U-turn, you are talking about crossing two lanes of traffic in a fairly short span. So I'm just, I mean, I drive this road all the time, like, there, there's very limited opportunities to do that. And I just, you know, I don't want to replace one problem with another. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. And, and one of the advantages, if you're taking a, a left turn off the side street, for example, you, you're looking for a gap in four different, you know, four different through lanes, two different directions. It's a lot more of a complicated gap acceptance if you're making that left turn. But if you're on the main line, you're really looking straight at that, those cars coming in front of you. So it is a U-turn. But again, I think some drivers might, you know, that we, with the addition of some of these signals, they might opt for waiting and then you get the green arrow over time, or it'll go to, switch to a protective phasing. So you, you know, if it was a five o'clock traffic, for example, you'd have the green arrow to help you. In other instances, you'd be, you know, just fine making that left turn. But a left from, from the major route is certainly easier from the side street, just because you're dealing with one direction. And, and we looked into, there's different things that you can do with an offset left turn that pushes the left a little bit further out. So if there, if there's a left turn coming at you, you've got to see around, see if the car's coming at you. But we, well, we don't want to make that U-turn very difficult, and, and we don't want to, we're trying to keep the costs low. But these are little, little nuances that could be looked at in, in the final design stage.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So thank you for the presentation. And Danielle had given us an update not too long ago. So most of this is not new to us, none of this is new to us, we've seen this before. So I, I just, I'm just going to make a, this is more probably for Michelle as we go through implementation. The wording in this study is, I assume, chosen carefully. There are places where it says add, and then there are places where it says consider adding. So I would hope that as we start to implement and prioritize at the start, that we then continue to study this corridor and make sure what we're adding is doing what we expect it to do. And then, you know, reevaluating these other long-term improvements and, and these items that say consider, because they may, they may not be necessary. So that's just a, and I know you probably have already thought that through, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that clearly with the price tag like this, we're not going to do it all at once. And we are going to need to look to that low hanging fruit. And so I loved everything you said, Michelle, until you said, it's going to be years before we begin construction. I don't think that more important. And as you said that, I do want to, I do want to take advantage of grants and make sure that we are using our money wisely and getting the money that we need. So I get all that, but I don't want to hear what you're saying. I think achieving part of the low hanging fruit that we can do, I mean, right away. I mean, you know, high visibility crosswalks and, you know, the, the stop lines and, I mean, those shouldn't, even, even on your chart are pretty low price tags too, I mean, $7,500. So I would hope that we, at least start that kind of work. Maybe that's what, what you're referring to. You're, you're referring to enhanced lanes and, and real construction, you know, moving through.
Yeah, as soon as I said years, I, I saw the cringing and I realized that was probably a poor choice of words. But I do still want to be realistic with council. I, I think, and the approach to this is something that we're going to need to have a conversation about. So there is intersection improvement money. Obviously, if you wanted to leverage that money and use it, you would still need to do design work first, which takes some time. I think one potential path forward that we were looking at was doing design work this year and potentially going after a LAPD grant next year. So if, that's just one option, but if that's an option that we pursued, you would be looking at a couple of years before something would happen. But I do think from the staff perspective, we would recommend to council that even though you do have some money there, to be careful if you choose to use it. Obviously, that's your decision, but that's going to be less money that you could leverage towards a grant match later. So just some discussions to have moving forward.
I, I like it all done, I like everything we, we talk about done tomorrow, but clearly we can't do that. I guess I'm just sensitive to the fact that, you know, I hear from everybody up and down this corridor a lot, because I live down there. And, you know, sensitive always to the fact that when we go out and survey people and ask them for their opinion, and then they think that nothing's happened, because they don't see the dirt turn. And they don't see any progress. And so that, you know, leads to frustration. So I'm really sensitive to that. That's why I talk about that low hanging fruit. If we can, you know, do the, the high visibility crosswalks and, and the other items, at least we can help. Thank you.
Okay. I was hoping, can you go ahead and get us back to slide six?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that this is a really good slide when you dig into it. It indicates where the traffic accidents are and what types they are. And it really helps us identify where the challenges are for the people on this corridor. So I was thinking right off the bat, this is something that might be nice to sort of share on social media as we're talking about this discussion, because this says a lot when you dig in on it. Saying that, I fully support all the short term recommendations. And you said you'd like to finish them tomorrow. I would like to finish them yesterday. So I think there's a, a large interest in trying to move this forward. We just finished our budget. We know that we have lots of competing needs. And I think intersection improvements are something that we've been talking about for a long time. And having prioritized them and done this study, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to have discussions about how we can move these forward as quickly as possible. I do want to share, though, that I'm most especially interested in the addition of the westbound right turn lane onto Davis Drive from Morrisville Parkway. That's been something that's been, I think, obvious to everyone for a long time. We didn't need the study, but it's expensive. And I know we want to leverage things, so that, getting that designed and maybe leveraging or maybe just paying for that out of pocket, I think will help that area a lot. I think it'll help the elementary school as well, which is important. I would look forward to the discussion about having the side path on both sides or just one side of Morrisville Parkway. I've ridden my bike on both sides. I don't know if we necessarily need side paths on both. If we're going to push one thing off, one side would be something I would push off rather than having to do both, especially when we're implementing safer crossings as a possibility. So those were my thoughts on this topic. We have Councilmember Rowell, who'd like to share his thoughts now.
Just to follow up on the collection of the data. So with this data that's been collected, not only be shared on our social media portals, but in our app and our data portals, so that residents can actually start tracking across the town where we're having more accidents and speeding. So that, you know, as we look at, we've talked about participatory budgeting, but kind of getting their real time feedback of how they want their tax dollars spent. The other thing I would add is, I've been running on this road quite a bit and am quite concerned about the speeding that I see. I've had two times, when I was renting just in the last month, where cars did not stop at the stop sign and almost got hit twice this month, where a car was coming out, once out of Preston, and here's the stop sign, and they didn't even stop, and they went like this. And then they didn't even, they were either on the phone or whatever. It, it actually happened in another place. So I just think we need to make sure that we're, you know, in addition to looking at investments, looking at our budgets in terms of staffing, our, our police departments doing everything they can. I don't know whether we could do sensors and speed zone cameras and things like that so that we can kind of get in real time data, you know, what I call the low hanging fruit, so we can really enforce, you know, preventing, you know, accidents and things like that. So just some observations. And, but in terms of the data, when we said traffic and pedestrian and crash data, is that data that was just for the study, is that, is the data from that study going to be integrated into our own platforms?
Yeah, no, these are great questions. So, yeah, NC DOT has, you know, GIS maps that you can go in and you can look at, you know, 10 years of pedestrian crash data. There's some public outreach data information that's out there. And that's really good for kind of getting a sense for where there might be hotspots, things like that. We, we've assisted on compiling pedestrian data and some other things. So there are some currently available public, you know, source data. For a study like this, this is where we dig in a little bit deeper. And this is where you look at the police reports and make sure that all the crashes that have been reported are in accurate location. That data is, needs to be updated periodically. It's not, it's a little more time consuming to get into those types of data. So that's, so, so kind of the planning level information is easily out there for everybody. Same thing with traffic data. There's annual ADT maps, annual daily traffic maps on NC DOT's website. And there are some, for example, the Towne and Carey's site has, has intersection counts. That includes a lot of these same intersections that you can go and look at, spot counts that have been done. All of our study, all of our counts that we collected, we, we handed over, and those are all posted to their website. So there, there, there's some data that you can really get to easily. There's other data that just unfortunately just takes a little more time to, to dig in and, or get fresh data, fresh counts. But all of that is very, we try to have our, our analysis be as data driven as, as possible. It just helps us out.
Thank you.
Everyone who's indicated a desire to speak has, so I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, um, that's number out, because I just heard me get, maybe you said this and I missed it. But this chart right here, this slide, you can, yeah. These numbers are there with the number of incidents, so if Davis Drive had 35 separate incidents, is that what that means?
Yeah, these are reported crashes. So there might even be a, a small fender bender that the people just drive off. Those are not included, but this is five years of data.
Oh, that was, this is five?
That's right.
I live there, this is a lot.
Uh-huh.
I'll tell you right now, I thought you were going to tell me this was like the last year or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, there is a lot, I'm, I'm one of those, somebody here in the D and B, and you pull up to the side and you change.
Yeah, that's, that's an asterisk, anytime we're, we're looking at data, it's only reported crashes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you, very comprehensive report, really appreciate it. We're going to be taking a vote on whether or not to accept this on July 9th as the other one. Is there anything else you want to add?
So I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Danielle, who has been sitting in the audience and in her former role, did a great amount of work on this project. So thank you.
Thank you, Danielle, appreciate it. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. So at this time, we are at item 11, which will be really quick, and then we're going to take a break. I believe it will be quick. We are now at item 11, public address. Residents that have signed in to address council will each be provided three minutes. To be fair and respectful of everyone's time, a timer is set. When the three minutes have lapsed, the buzzer will go off, and I will ask you to conclude your thoughts. Speakers and residents may also email council or the town clerk. Town Clerk Spillane, has anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. No, no one has signed up this evening.
Okay. Is there anyone here who did not sign up, but who'd like an opportunity to speak, to address this body up to three minutes on any topic of your choosing? Okay. Seeing none, we are going to take a 15 minute break at this time. If we could please reconvene at 8:46. If we could please reconvene at 8:46. Town manager, all set? Okay, we're coming back into session. Tonight, we have one public hearing. Before we get that started, I'd like to acknowledge Town Manager Zudema.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. Appreciate just a moment. As you prepare to call Brittany up, I would like to recognize that our former Planner Two and former Acting Planning Manager is, as of Monday, our Planning Manager. She's been promoted, and congratulations.
Okay. Thank you. Tonight, we have one public hearing, a continued quasi-judicial public hearing from June 11th, scheduled for council action tonight. A resolution approving a special use permit to Duke Energy Progress LLC for a major utility facility used to accommodate the future development of a substation at Zero Airport Boulevard and 429 Airport Boulevard. The town clerk will come forward to administer oaths to any speakers signed up who have not previously been sworn in at the June 11th meeting. Afterwards, Brittany Johnson, Planning Manager, will facilitate this item. So is there anyone here who needs to be sworn in who wasn't sworn in on the 11th? Okay, sir, if you could just please approach the town clerk? And repeat after me, please.
I, stating, please. Do someone swear?
Someone swear.
To tell the truth?
Tell the truth.
The whole truth?
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth?
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, if you could re-.
Oh, yes.
And as they're doing that, I would just say that the public hearing is now continuing, so it's still open. As this public hearing has been continued, any members of the community who spoke at the previous public hearing on June 11th are not permitted to speak again. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, do you have anyone signed up to speak on this item? Okay, so these are just in case we have questions. Okay?
Understanding.
Planning manager, it's all yours.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to bring before you again the quasi-24008 special use permit application submitted by Duke Energy Progress LLC. As a reminder, the applicant is requesting, again, a special use permit for a major utility facility use to accommodate the future development of the operation of an electrical substation at Zero Airport Boulevard and a portion of 429 Airport Boulevard located south of the intersection of the Airport Boulevard and Parkway. During the public hearing for this item held on June 11th, the applicant presented materials, evidence, and testimony regarding the findings of the seven special use standards. The public hearing remains open. The applicant is prepared to provide updated information for you all tonight. As a reminder, the subject property is here outlined in yellow. It is currently zoned corridor commercial and is vacant. As for the adjacent properties, the proposed site is outlined in yellow again, and two existing single-family residential properties are outlined in red, as well as a previously approved mixed-use development is outlined in blue. The proposed development, as you all reviewed, the proposed development is important to note, the location of the transmission corridor that will service the proposed substation has not been finalized, therefore, the applicant has provided four unique site plan, alternative layouts. Each alternative anticipates a different point of entry for the transmission lines to the property and subsequent tree impacts. The transmission corridor routing is not within the purview of the town to decide. Any one of the four proposed alternative layouts could be the final site design. Each layout has a corresponding demolition plan and site plan. This project will require a staff-level review. The applicant will review the alternatives in more detail. Again, there is alternative A. Again, I won't go through all of that because applicant will provide that in their presentation. Alternative B. Alternative C. And alternative D. Special use permit standards, the applicant must demonstrate through competent materials and substantial evidence and testimony how the findings meet the seven special use standards outlined below from Section 2.5.6D of the UDO. The applicant will review these seven standards along with their findings and conclusions. Staff's recommendation, upon receiving evidence and testimony demonstrating the finding of facts are met, staff recommends approval of special use permit with four conditions listed below. And that would be, one, the perimeter buffers that exceed the minimum width required by the UDO will be provided generally in the locations in the site as shown in the plan. Two, the amount of tree canopy retention and preservation area is to be provided on the site will be exceeding the minimum requirements of the UDO shown on the plan. Three, the applicant shall submit annexation petition with the site plan approval application. And four, the proposed development shall be consistent with the approved site plan, notwithstanding minor modifications to the approved site plan that may be approved administratively consistent with the provisions of Section 2.5.6C 6D of the UDO. Again, for your action tonight, again, the public hearing from July 11th remains open. Once the hearing is closed, you do have the option to approve as submitted, approve with conditions, or deny. This is a quasi-judicial process, therefore, you will be reviewing the findings of fact. This is your resolution for tonight. Do you have any questions for staff or for Attorney Gray about process prior to us bringing applicant forward with their updates?
Would the town attorney like to say anything at this time, or you covered it last time?
I have nothing to add unless somebody asks a question. We are in this quasi-judicial process, and obviously, you saw the witnesses being sworn and testifying last time, so your decision will be based on the testimony and the evidence from the last meeting and tonight.
Okay, thank you. So, looking down at my fellow council members, if you have any questions about any of the findings of fact, we'd want to ask those now before we close the public hearing so that they can testify to address them. If we don't have any questions, we can move to close and then go towards motions. So I guess I'd accept them.
I think the applicant has more...
I'm sorry?
I think the applicant wants to present additional evidence, unless I'm mistaken.
Yes, the applicant has prepared additional information for you all tonight. So, if you don't have any questions for staff, then I will turn it over to applicant for further information.
No, I can... My question is directed to them, so I'll wait for their presentation.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Colley, members of council, Toby Coleman with Smith Anderson on 150 Fayetteville Street, and I'll be here on behalf of Duke Energy. Obviously, you saw my colleague Amy Crowell a couple weeks ago. It's Amy's wedding anniversary tonight, so she sends her Glock cards, but we can all understand why she decided the house comes to that. We just wanted to... I don't want to push my luck, obviously, if you guys are ready to take the vote, I don't want to spend too much time there. But I did want to answer a couple of questions. So, just as a recap, Duke presented testimony and evidence...
Right.
...applies with the special use standards. It was an empty testimony evidence position. You all asked a couple of questions. One was about, there's two single-family homes nearby, and so there's a couple of questions about can you reach out to them again, can you make contact, what can you do? And so, just wanted to give you all an update on those items. So, just as a reminder, of course, staff report highlights this, but there's two adjacent homes that appear to be occupied, 505 Airport, which is right, which is immediately adjacent to the site, 512 Airport Boulevard, which is across the street. So, Duke did three things. They called, they put door hangers on the door, and mailed certified letters. During the process of doing the door hanger, Duke representative did speak with a resident of 505 Airport Boulevard, who stated that they were aware of the proceedings. Didn't say much else other than that, but did make a number of efforts and haven't heard anything other than today. And we'll just note, I think you guys know this, but both of those properties are zoned 505 Airport is zoned, corridor commercial, 505 Airport is zoned business activity center, gateway outlet. In both cases, single-family uses are not permitted in those zoning districts, and so those homes are pre-made, that are not completely legally used. Wanted to also just note the sort of vegetative offers that you could expect from 505 Airport. I don't have... We didn't have any fancy sort of visuals, but thought this might be helpful. On the left there, that is basically buffered distance that you have in transmission line here, which is, you have a minimum of 60 feet of trees that shape up and be disturbed, which would clear property for the house and the transmission line, about 210.
Okay. And then, the layout B just shows that if the transmission line came in from the north, you'd have about 280 feet of buffered area. So again, just wanted to give you all a sense of that, because I know there's some questions about the impact to that property. Also wanted to give you just a quick update. So there, we did add a note to the plan in the... over the last couple of weeks. The note basically just says that the transmission lines aren't fully set, and so, as a result, there could be a 40-foot movement either way in where the transmission lines are located. To give you a sense of what we're talking about, here's an example. So, what would happen is, is the transmission line total area is about 250 feet, 125 feet a ride away with some danger tree area that will be cleared. That 250-foot area can move 40 feet to the left, you would get some areas that wouldn't be cleared to the right. We have... We'll go ahead and just put it into the record. We have copies for you all if you'd like it, but we do have... I don't know if they've been put in the record already, if you need it. They have been put in the record? Okay. There is a... Could you switch over to, I think it's the Dewberry tab? I don't think we need to go through all of these, but these are the, just to give you a sense, examples of, these are literally just drawings of, in every case where it could shift 40 feet in every criteria, so there's eight of these that will be, that are being entered into the record. Happy to go through any or all of them, but also don't want to belabor the point. So... And so, with that, if I could switch back to the other... So with that, I would just note, you know, that in terms of meeting the standards, I'll just put this up here. This is just a list of evidence that was put in at the last meeting regarding the standards. Again, I'm not going to belabor the point, just wanted to sort of give you all a quick summary and a thumbnail of the evidence related to all the standards. And with that, we're available for questions. We do have a full team here, so if you have any questions, happy to answer them or get the right person up there, up here, excuse me.
Okay, I think we'll start with Councilmember Johnson, because she's indicated earlier, and then Councilmember Robati.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the update and the 40-foot shift. I understand council has no authority over where their transmission line goes, and there are four options that will be included in this special use permit because of the four options of where transmission lines will come from. And maybe you all said this at the last meeting, and I've forgotten, but is there potential for a fifth or a sixth option, and then where does that leave us?
You mean into the site?
Mm-hmm.
No. These are the four... So if these are approved, these are only four, are only four options. If we, if we, if they're, you know, if something came up where all of a sudden we said we need a entry from, you know, I'm just making something up, right, from the northwest, or the southeast, or whatever, we would have to come back. That would be, basically, that would be a major amendment to the special use permit. So we'd have to come back before you all and say, here's what we've got.
Thank you for that. So, right now, with what you just talked about, the only leadway you have is this 40-foot shift, and anything beyond that would have to come back to council to...
That's right. And so, and, you know, the reason for the 40-foot shift is just, obviously, because the transmission lines aren't fully set yet, the routes aren't set, they don't even know where the, you know, the large towers would go, and as I understand it, the exact placement of the tower sort of determine exactly where you make these turns, so that's sort of where the 40 feet come in.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was the only question I had.
Great. Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Pretend Garamilla.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming back and for the additional clarifications. I don't really understand how it's possible that you have no idea which path these transmission lines would take. Like, there's no, there's no topographical things, there's no, there's no zoning implications that would make one plan preferable to the other, like they're all equally on the table? Is that what we're hearing right now?
Mike, would that be you? I'll let Mike answer. I think, in general, I think, I think all of those things are going to come into play, and I think that's part of, part of the study process that will happen once, once there's adequate time. I'll let Mike speak.
Good evening. Micah Retzloff, again with Duke Energy. Yes, so the routing study for the transmission tap line is currently ongoing. You know, this, this project is a little unique in that we're trying as best we can to run these two processes, the zoning process and our routing process concurrently. But, but in the instance, the phase where we're at now is we're still in the data collection phase, and so what that means is we've engaged the public in now two open houses, and at the most recent open house, there was a map that was available, and it showed all of the current routes that are being evaluated. You know, we, we, you know, our goal and our charge from our regulator, the Utilities Commission, is that we maintain an objective stance on this until we get to the final evaluation phase. And so, right now, you know, there really is no preference to any of those routes that were reflected in the latest open house, but we certainly expect to make that decision and choose that final route by the fall of this year.
So, I understand that from your point of view, at this point, there is no preference, but you have been made aware that council has a very strong preference for one of those, one of those transmission paths. Can you speak to what, what part that might play in your final decision?
Well, certainly. I mean, obviously, the town of Morseville is a significant stakeholder in this process. We, you know, value the feedback we receive from all of our stakeholders, property owners, municipalities such as yours, who are directly impacted with, with the transmission line. You know, all of that feedback is not only included in our scoring, you know, your preference to one route over another is certainly made, you know, a public part of our evaluation criteria. You know, when we submit our final selection to the Utilities Commission for their review and approval, we will submit with them, with our filing, all of the feedback that we've received. So I understand that the town has submitted a formal letter. We've been in, you know, those two open houses where various members of the city, of the town staff attended and, and provided some feedback on what, you know, for instance, items are most important to the town in terms of viewsapes, or, you know, sensitivities in the area that should be avoided. So it's all of that testimony, all of that, that information's been submitted, is being included in our evaluation.
And I assume that you have, that you've done this before, and you're somewhat experienced in the, in how this will go. So, I know that it's not really your place to speculate on this, but can you tell me, in other similar proceedings, have, they have, what's weighed the most heavily? Because we have zoning considerations for future zone that we definitely do not want transmission lines through. You know, we have certain areas where we would prefer that they not go, but understanding that there might be financial considerations or something else, can you tell me what, generally speaking, ways... What, generally speaking, is considered relevant by the Utilities Commission when making these decisions?
Sure. Well, and the utilities, I can't speak too much for the Utilities Commission, but certainly we believe that our, our, our evaluation criteria are pretty aligned. You know, I think I mentioned in the last public hearing, a lot of the constraints that strongly drive our decision-making are things like land uses. Not just your, your most logical location of residential land uses, but civic uses, schools, churches, parks. Those are certainly towards the top of what you're asking about, the items that are most heavily weighted in our study. You know, the other criteria constraints that would typically come, you know, somewhere, you know, either close to or equal to, to those land uses would be environmental sensitivities. You know, water bodies, you know, threatening endangered species, but also the presence of recognized environmental conditions like contaminations. Obviously, in this part of Morseville, we've, we've identified several parcels that had historical uses that, you know, would, would, you know, generally be items or locations that we would want to try to avoid. If we had to run a transmission line through there, we'd have to consider what kind of mitigation strategies are needed to be, be able to place that transmissions line there. You know, finally, cultural resources, you know, if they're, they're important items related to either, you know, historical or prehistoric... or prehistorical. I'm not sure we have too many of those here in, in Morrisville, but those are certainly constraints. And then, you know, finally, a consideration that, that is certainly considered, but it's, it's a little bit, it's certainly, you know, further down the list, is, is constructability. That does tie a little bit to the financial component, but, and certainly the commission, you know, does not allow us to forget the, the final financial constraints of, of building any of these transmission routes, because of course, those are, are things that are wrapped up in our rate cases that, that go, you know, that are, are in turn, you know, forwarded back to our, our rate payers here in North Carolina.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Mayor Protem Garamella, please.
Yeah. Hey Toby, it's always good to see you, you know. My question is more about substation does not endanger public safety and health. In that, a wild thought of, in my day job, we work a lot on disaster recovery. So if something happened to the substation, like it's in the flight path, you know, a plane fell or something, what is the, what will happen next in terms of, it is, it is one of the key important substation that gives power to closer businesses, which are more than $2 billion down the street?
Right.
So what is, how does it work in rerouting and basically getting them back? And because even a blip for a life science causes huge damage for them. So how does, I wanted to understand your disaster recovery for these sites.
Sure. Any thought on who, Tom?
I want to. Good evening. My name's Tom Patton. Work for Duke Energy. So I'm going to try to handle your question. I think the, the best answer is, if that substation went down, which on occasion will happen, obviously, you've heard us talk about our smart grid. So outside of, of that substation going down, we will obviously look at switching options for other substations to then route the power to as many customers as we can, notwithstanding what we cannot switch. If it was catastrophic, obviously, we have mobile substations and stuff like that that we bring in. But our options, if a substation were to go down, or even a feeder within the substation goes down, we obviously begin immediately with switching. And those switches are all over our system.
So how, what is your MPTR, like mean time to restore? Is it like hours, or is it days? What is it?
To be honest, I can't fairly answer the question because it would depend what the, what the cause was. You know, if the cause is something that, you know, right now, snakes, snakes get on substation, substation goes out, we get folks there who are on call as fast as possible and restore it quickly. If it's more of a catastrophic, obviously, it'll take a little bit more time.
And at the time, how do you manage the expectation of all this life science, which is heavily depending on your power?
I think, and, and I, I can't speak specifically, but I think we work with the customers and, and our, some of those life signs, we have switches right outside their campuses. You know, they're, within their campus, we have several switches that if things happen within their campus, we can switch to bring them power back on, you know, just by rerouting it. And then we work with them also on the reliability of the equipment we put in compared to the equipment they have. And I, and I, and I don't know the details of if they've put any, you know, what they have done for other sources, generation, other stuff like that.
Yeah. So, but when I'm, I'm asked, the reason I'm asking all these questions is because, end of the day, Duke Energy is such a critical component for the whole ecosystem. And I wanted to ensure that the businesses are not going, you know, in a loop, because I work in a pharma industry. So the power is such an important thing, especially all the clinical research and everything they do, even a blip causes a lot of issues. So yes, it is incumbent upon our, we have stand-up generators for a week before something, you know,
Right.
We can, we can run it. So everything is not like that. So are you setting an expectation to the, the companies that you're providing to ensure that they got to know it's not like 99.99, you know, something could happen and you had to look into your stuff?
So to answer your question, yeah, I mean, we work with our, our customers to provide. They, they, obviously, when we build their infrastructure, they're well aware of what we're doing. And they typically know the route we're taking and where the nearest source is. As far as the guarantee, I think that's where we work with them. And, and they, they typically have their contractors that are working on their secondary power, such as generation and stuff like that. I don't, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Yeah, yeah. Partly, but if I can get some kind of a documentation to our staff, I would like to read is, what is your, you know, like procedures that if something happens to a substation, what is the ETA for, you know, repair? Or, you know, if it's something really terribly happened, I, I want to know because what kind of expectation are we setting for this entire region here, not just for the substation? How quickly can you switch? And those kind of things, because those all should be documented, you know, and readily available from a Duke standpoint of view, in my opinion. That's what we do in every sector.
I, I understand your question. I just think, based on the, based on the situation that arises, impacts the amount of time it takes to, to restore.
Okay. So, so I'll, I'll end with that. So like, so there is nothing written to any of these companies that we have to give them power 100%? Or like something happens, then the expectation is set? I just want to have that because there's a lot of investment going into this area.
Agreed.
And, and they are all relying on this particular substation because the reason you're building this is not because of any other reason, but to have uninterrupted clean power supply closer to the source. That is the reason you guys are doing it.
Yes. And I would add to that, to, to provide the capacity
Yes, absolutely.
Based on the, the new infrastructure needed in the area.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to ask more, but I, if you, if I can get some answers, you know, that would be good.
Okay. I'm sure Derek and I can work to get you something afterwards.
Okay.
I think, you know, I think, just to follow up on what Tom was saying, I think, I think the, the challenge in specifically answering your question is, to Tom's point, that it depends on, you know, the scope of the issue. You know, they, Duke has portable substations. They can literally bring a substation onto the site if it completely goes down. But then the question is also, was there a massive hurricane, right? Are you dealing with a system-wide failure? Are you dealing with a substation-specific failure, that sort of thing?
Yeah. And I totally hear it from, from the voice of a customer.
Yeah.
What is for me, you know, like, it, I'm also a subject to the same thing.
Yeah. Understood, understood.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. Derek and I can, can work to try to get you some more, some more information.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I want to just, or, address Mayor Protem's comments that this isn't something new. There are multiple life science companies right down in Holly Springs with Amgen, Fujifilm, and now Saquara's. You know, I know when they were first building Novartis, they lost power a few times because a squirrel was in their substation. And Duke Energy provides power down there. The same with the Merck complex up in Treeburn. Merck provides, I mean, Duke provides power there. So, I mean, power reliability is something these companies are highly aware of already. And they build in multiple emergency generators to supply the power that they evaluate they need for the equipment that they can't afford to lose power to. And then they also have UPSs all over the place for their control power. So, I mean, it's not, this is not something that is unique to this power station or to the life science buildings on McCrimmon Extension. The power reliability that they have down in Holly Springs is going to be the same that we have here or anywhere else. So it's, it's not new, unique. These people do this every day. So you're asking for information that is out there publicly already.
So that's what I was asking, right? Because there here, so, yes, you're right. Holly Springs has the same thing. Everyone has the same thing. But I just want to hear from Duke, what is your disaster recovery and what is the restorative process? Could be one or two scenarios. You can just give it, if, if a squirrel went in, or if a plane fell on it, or a hurricane. I'm just throwing ideas here, like, because you just don't know what it will be. But the end of the day, the power is interrupted. What is the way to get it back? And generators are there because they will not 100% depend on the power, but that will only run for such a small time. When, when a life science, the chart that was given to us showed 25 megawatts of power each day. They can't sustain that much, you know, if something happened for more than hours to the amount of consumption that's happening. That's the reason I was asking.
Thank you. I'd like to just ask a question real quick. I believe it was Michael who was saying that there is a scoring matrix of sorts. Is that publicly available? Is that something that when the transmission line decision is being made, will that be something we have some visibility and transparency in? Because I mean, Councilmember Robati was asking about the weighting. I think that would be helpful for us to know. Thank you, sir.
You know, the final evaluation is not publicly available. During the, the last open house that we had, there were, were several tables where subject matter experts were, were discussing with, with members of the public this scoring system, giving an example of, of the various constraints and how some would rank higher in terms of weighting than others. The, the final scoring that is, is completed by the company and it's the basis of the, the company's routing decision, is included in its entirety in the filing to the commission.
Including weighting?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. So we will have some visibility into that. Does the weighting change from case to case, or is it always the same? Can we go at the last one that was done and just take that matrix and use it?
Well, certainly the weighting does change each time. It's, it's like the classic law of real estate, location, 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 right? Every, every location is unique. And so the constraints as they're weighted is, is similar, but, but different. You know, residential land uses is always going to rank pretty close to the top. But if we were in an area that, you know, for instance, did have a significant amount of cultural resources, those, you know, if, if, if the stakeholders in that area expressed a strong desire to protect those, that would be included in, in our weighting and considered in our weighting.
And a letter from the municipality, does that count as on behalf of the, the residents? I mean, do we get that much weight? Or did we need to have a whole lot of residents saying that they needed Airport Boulevard to be the route?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, each stakeholder we like to treat is, is equally as possible. I, I don't know that, you know, the town's letter gets 500 counts versus a single property owner, but certainly it's going to absolutely be included with the, with the weighting determinations.
Okay. This has been very informative. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Did you have more, Mayor Protem? Okay. Was there anything else, Toby, that you wanted to present to us?
No. Thank you for your time. The only thing I'll note is, is that as part of the Utilities Commission process, the town, I think, also gets noticed and does have the ability to further weigh in as part of the, the hearing process. So there, I think there's that additional, since there's been some questions about process, I just wanted to note that.
And would you be choosing your transmission corridor in advance of that?
Yes. So as I understand
Reacting to something that's already been recommended.
The filing is the corridor, the corridor, and then there can be feedback, additional feedback to the Utilities Commission about that.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other questions, I think it'd be appropriate, Planning Manager Johnson, to go ahead and close the public hearing. Would you agree? Yep. Okay. I'd entertain, sorry, you had something? Yeah, sure. Councilmember Ralph, please.
To the town attorney and the staff. I don't see a lot of residents here today. Hopefully, some are watching this online. I think my colleagues and I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the council, but I just want everyone to know that, you know, we continue to be challenged with having to approve these substations close to residences. And we know that there's going to come a day when this is going to show up, you know, not too close to someone's home, and it's going to show up. And people are going to come and say, why did you approve this? So from the attorney, I just want to know, to what extent will we be able to notify people in addition to just, you know, the fact that this happened and they go read the minutes, that this was a quasi-judicial hearing and that, that we had to get the approval based on meeting the test? Because that isn't, you know, six months from now, no one's going to remember that. So I'm just asking for your legal advice. You're just...
Yes, sir. I would say a couple of things. Number one, a utility substation is a permitted use in the corridor commercial zone with a special use permit. So unlike the last one you dealt with, which was surrounded by three neighborhoods, this one is in a corridor commercial zoning district. And under our UDO, under the quasi-judicial process, if the applicant brings forward credible evidence that meets each of the seven standards, then council is required by law to approve the permit. If they don't, then you can deny the permit. You know, as I said in the first public hearing, quasi-judicial means sort of like court.
Yeah.
And you are the jury. You get to weigh the evidence and determine whether the standards have been met. But for purposes of citizens watching or asking you questions, this is a process with legal boundaries that you're bound to follow.
Citizens are going to, I mean, I'm not, I'm going to support this because it met the test, but a resident's going to ask, why did you just not deny it? And I guess the answer is that legally, they've met the test and we have to approve it.
I think that's the answer. Yes, sir.
That's all I want for...
Thank you. Okay. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion?
A motion, Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Robati to close this public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously. Would anyone like to make any comments before we take a vote? I'd like to share just something real quick. I believe the applicant meets the requirements and our region needs more power capacity, so I support this approval. We aim to maintain a positive collaborative relationship with Duke Power, and we hope our support will influence their decision to route transmission lines along I-40 and Airport Boulevard to avoid disrupting our town's current infrastructure and future plans. So I just wanted that read into the record. At each of our seats, we have the words that actually have to be said for this motion. Would anyone like to be acknowledged to make the motion? I recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Upon receiving evidence and testimony demonstrating the findings of fact are met with the following conditions. Parameter buffers that exceed the minimum width required by the UDO will be provided generally in locations on the site as shown on the plan included with the special use permit application. The amount of tree canopy retention and preservation area to be provided on the site will exceed the minimum requirements of the UDO as shown, and just, as shown and described on the plan included with the special use permit application. The applicants shall submit an annexation petition with the site plan approval application for the property that is subject of the special use permit approval. The proposed development shall be developed consistent with the approved site plan. Notwithstanding the foregoing, minor modifications to the approved site plan may be approved administratively, consistent with the provisions of Section 2.5.6.C6D of the UDO. I hereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-2030 of the Morrisville Town Council, approving a special use permit for major utility facility use to accommodate the future development of a substation at Zero Airport Boulevard and 429 Airport Boulevard, Wake County. PIN 07560- County, PIN 0756034134, and a portion of Wake County, PIN 0756023697, Quasi 240008.
I have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Robati, a second from Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Planning Manager Johnson. Thank you to the Duke team for the two trips out and all the hard work. We look forward to collaborating with you further on this item. At this time, we are at Item 13, which is Council and Manager Comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
The only comment I have today is I just want to thank everyone for great Juneteenth events in the Triangle and I've been attending some Pride events. The music series was really great. And I just want to say that there's a lot of people really bummed out about Apple delaying their plans. And, you know, I just think that this is a real eye opener for Morrisville of just kind of like, you know, we've provided over $845 million of incentives over 39 years. We've had $439 million of incentives that have been reneged on. And if you go by Parameter Park, you're already seeing Morrisville being affected. I mean, we've had, you know, Microsoft not renewing their lease, Invitae pulled out. Cineos is another example in Morrisville. So the point I'm trying to make is I think that as we move forward, excuse me, Mayor Prettem-Geramela and others made a comment during the retreat about, you know, we've approved economic development, but it's so important that we grow the pipeline. And I think part of it is also growing small businesses and startups. And so I'm going to be sharing ideas down the road on how we do that, particularly focusing on, you know, AI and technology companies and things like that. I think that can create a lot of jobs and opportunities. We often forget that SaaS, Korean Red Hat, were all startups. And today, they employ thousands of people and I think we can do the same thing. So I just wanted to say that today because I'm really annoyed by the constant incentives that we're approving and then, you know, what's next? I mean, it's just happening too often. So I hope the next governor, whoever that is, addresses this issue, but it is an issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Prettem-Geramela, please.
So I'll be very short. We have an event coming up on July 3rd and it is in a different location than last year and I think that cannot be amplified enough. Instead of being near the farmer's market, it's going to be at Cedar Fork, like the soccer fields. And there will be pretty much no parking at the site. You will have to go to a satellite lot if you want to park and there will be a shuttle provided, or you can use our beautiful greenways to access the site, although some of the area might be blocked off for safety for the fireworks. So more to come on that. I know the town is getting ready to kind of give more information to everyone. However, just be aware that the fireworks are on the third and they're in a different location. So please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Prettem-Geramela, followed by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
So just to, in case anybody misinterpreted, and I know you didn't mean this, Councilmember Rao, but when you were talking about we, when you were talking about incentives, you were talking about we as a state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not we as a town.
No, no, I meant...
So, yeah.
Sorry, I meant for the record, North Carolina in general, our state. And it's my personal opinion, not, I'm not speaking on behalf of my colleagues, but I was just giving an opinion about me in general, just from an economic development perspective. We're affected because water companies are pulling out and Parameter Park is emptying out. And we as a town are going to have to figure out how to rebuild these areas because we keep getting incentives and companies aren't meeting the incentives. And so, you know, this is like the fourth deal has been companies pulling out. Apple was going to give 3,000 jobs. They're not pulling out, but they're delaying four years and that could be another six years.
So I don't, I don't, I don't deny your point. I'm just saying you were talking about we as a state.
We as a state.
Versus we as the town of Morrisville. I just want to make that clear to anybody who may misinterpret the comments when it comes to incentives.
When it comes to incentives, what I'm saying is that in my opinion, I'm not speaking on behalf of my colleagues, in my opinion, I believe that this is critically important as a member of the council for our economic development efforts when we grow the pipeline. Because the companies, you know, we've had Cineos, Invitae, Microsoft, and now Apple.
Respectfully, Councilmember, I got your point. I really did. And it was a great point. I think council comments are really intended to be kind of one way. Could we sort of keep the format?
I'm fine with that, but I just want to clarify because it will be misinterpreted by the public. So anyhow, that's, I don't disagree with what you're saying and I agree that you should just, I just wanted to clarify that one statement about incentives. So, and with that, I'm going to say happy 4th of July to everyone. I hope to see you at fireworks next Wednesday night on July 3rd here in Morrisville.
I just have a couple of things, followed by Councilmember Robati. It is World Well-Being Week. It's June 24th through the 30th, which is a global initiative designed to highlight the importance of wellness in all aspects of life. I enjoyed getting a head start on this this past Sunday, celebrating International Yoga Day outside of HSNC Temple. It's a beautiful day and they have countless programs open to the entire community. I want to say congratulations to the USA Cricket Team for their historic success in the Cricket World Cup by advancing to the Super Eight round. Congratulations to all the recent graduates and their families. Thanks so much to the school board members, all WCPSS teachers and support staff for their timeless efforts to support the educational and social journey for all our WCPSS students. I am looking forward to our Independence Day celebration at the new location of Cedar Fork District Park on Aviation Parkway next Wednesday, July 3rd. Please remember to bring your own water bottle as we will have refilling stations on site. And it's going to be a really fun summer outdoors. I encourage everyone to get out on our greenways, parks, and disc golf courses as much as they can so that we can be one of the healthiest and most vibrant communities in Wake County and the state. And now, Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, for all the reasons advanced by Councilmember Rao, I'm very happy that we approved an economic development position in this last budget. I think that redevelopment in Morrisville is going to become critically important and I'm glad that we're going to be ahead of it. Thank you.
Excellent. Town Manager Zuzama, is there anything you'd like to share?
So very quickly, I have a comment. Giselle has a comment. John has a comment. Some information to share with you very quickly. Mayor, you had asked me to share a little bit about the conference I attended. So last week was at the North Carolina City County Managers Association Conference. Excellent opportunity to network with peers and to hear a lot of good information. Several key speakers attended some classes on social media liability, manager reflections, including Martha Page reflecting on her career. I had some discussion around affordable housing, interesting about the 2024 election and its potential impact, and then a very valuable session on personal resilience with other managers on Saturday. So thank you for the continued opportunity to attend conferences and expand my knowledge base. Appreciate it. Giselle?
Good evening. I have a good update for you all regarding Camp Ignite, which is in full session this week. Camp Ignite is an all-girls fire camp that is hosting 20 high school-aged young women to explore the firefighting profession. This is provided free of charge for those that sign up for the camp. They get to experience a combination of educational activities and hands-on experience. In fact, today, they were climbing up the ladder and it was pretty exciting to see them go up the ladder and down and come. And that was probably one of their favorite activities of the day. The camp provides a supportive and encouraging environmental, environment, allowing young women to try new things, getting out of their comfort zone, building their confidence, and discover their strength. I want to proudly highlight that this is an effort 100% led by the female firefighters in all three departments, and that is Cary, Apex, and Morrisville, who are the instructors through the whole week. And they have put a lot of effort into putting this camp together. And many of them, in fact, are coming out on their days off to support and to teach this young woman. This has taken a lot of coordination. It's been, I would say, years in the making until we finally were able to get the partnership together to run the camp. Our very own fire engineer, Natasha Bird, has taken the lead for Morrisville, along with the other female firefighters in our department. And I would like to quote her words. She says, "Our ultimate goal at Camp Ignite is to show our participants a future filled with limitless opportunities, demonstrating that anything is possible through hard work, determination, and dedication. By fostering a spirit of resilience and perseverance, we aim to inspire and empower young women, helping them see beyond traditional boundaries and to recognize their own potential." This effort was featured today in ABC 11 and CBS 17, and the articles are fantastic. So you can't miss them. They were released just right before the council meeting. You have also received an invitation from Fire Chief Nate Lasinski to attend the graduation Friday afternoon that will be held this Friday at 3:00 PM at the Cary Senior Center. So if you have the opportunity, come out and support Class Number One of Camp Ignite. Just by what I have seen in the first two days, it's going really well. So I'm sure this will be many years, many classes coming through the years, but it's great to see an inaugural class being so successful. And thank you for your support.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will draw your attention to the back of your chambers room here, and you will see four signs. These are samples of our new Town Hall banner signs. There will be five different signs for 44 total banners to be put up on the light poles on Town Hall Drive. They are part of our language access plan in welcoming people of many different cultures and languages here to Morrisville. And so you see they have different languages on them and we hope people will feel that welcoming feeling that they get in Morrisville right here as they drive on Town Hall Drive. So they should be installed fairly soon. We are waiting for some hardware to come in. And as soon as that is done, our Public Works Department will be installing them on Town Hall Drive. And thanks to Will Glenn, our Director of Communications and Outreach, and his team for organizing and procuring the signs, and of course, Jeffrey Brown and his team, they will be doing the work to put them up.
Thank you all very much. Right now, we are going to move towards our work session. Are we going to do that down at the table or should we do that up here? Okay, so we're scheduled for a 10-minute break and then reconvene down at the table. Okay, everybody? So reconvene 9:56. So reconvene 9:56. We're coming back one minute early from break. That doesn't happen very often. At this time, I'd like to recognize Brandon Zudema, our Town Manager, to help facilitate this next work session. We have one work session tonight is to discuss the WCPSS 2023 through 2028 Strategic Plan. This item will be introduced by Town Manager Zudema. Council members, please check your mics to ensure discussion is captured on the live stream and the recording. Thank you, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure tonight to introduce Dr. Brooksie Sturdivant. If I'm pronouncing that right, I believe I am, I hope, with Wake County Public Schools and also LeAnn Alfred Keith with the school system. We have been working on this for several months. We had to play a little schedule game to get everybody to line up. But they are here tonight to share with you the most recent version of the school system's strategic plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to their staff. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. So I'll start off with a little bit of demographic data from our district. Thank you. All right, so within all of Wake County Public Schools, we have 159,995 students. That's close to 160,000. As you can see, that's a lot. This also presents our demographic data. We have a few acronyms in there, so I'll make sure you're clear on those. F R L is Free and Reduced Lunch. We have A I G, academically and intellectually gifted, and L E P, limited English proficiency. Within our school system, we have 199 schools. As you can see, there's the breakdown with how many we have. It's elementary, middle, and high. Multi-level includes our K-8 schools. We also have some 612 schools. We serve 20,000. We have 20,000 employees who serve our entire district. That includes 11,000 teachers. 20,000 includes our administrators. You think about our Bus Transportation Department. We also have Foods and Nutrition Maintenance. So all staff, that's the 20,000. And we are the 15th largest district in the nation, the largest in our state. And we're the 10th largest employer in the state. So specific to Morrisville, of the 160,000 students, 5,132 live here in Morrisville and attend our public school system. Approximately 300 of the residents here in Morrisville are in the count for our employees. So 300 employees. So as you can see, we have four numbers here on the screen, 37420, 37420. And if that sounds like a ZIP code, it definitely is our roadmap map for where we're going. This highlights key components of our strategic plan. We have three priority areas, seven goals that we're working to achieve and that we'll be monitoring that progress ongoing, four pillars, and 20 aims. So you're going to hear about those specifically in a moment. But 37420 is where we're heading. Our strategic plan does include our mission and vision. The mission speaks to what we do. The vision outlines why we do it. So for our mission, I'll read that verbatim because that's very important. "Wake County Public School System will provide a relevant and engaging education and will graduate students who are collaborative, creative, effective communicators, and critical thinkers." So notice all of those start with a C. That outlines a key component of our work, the four Cs. And our vision, "All Wake County Public School System students will be prepared to reach their full potential and lead productive lives in a complex and changing world." So again, that speaks to why we do what we do. We do have seven core beliefs that drive our work. So ultimately, these are things that we process regularly. This is what we believe about students. So one and two really speak to our beliefs about our students. Three, four, and five, those speak to our beliefs about our staff and the work that we do and should do. And six speaks to our belief about community partnerships and the resources therein. And seven just speaks to the management of it all, our resources, our facilities, and even our operations.
And so what you'll see in our plan are things that we recommitted to in our last strategic plan as well as things that are new priorities for us. So the four Cs that Brooksie highlighted are part of our recommitments. Academic achievement and a focus on the graduation rate are also part of those recommitments as our focusing on a high-quality workforce. And then we have several new commitments in our strategic plan as well that includes equity and excellence components to each of our goals as well as a new focus on behavioral health and emphasizing wellness for our staff and our students. And so alongside that, I'm also going to be sharing with you our strategic plan framework. So you can see it behind me. It includes three priorities and four pillars. So our priorities are the outcomes that we want to achieve, student knowledge and skills being the first priority, why we exist as a school system, but also well-being because we know that that is critical to students' knowledge and skills development as well. And finally, operational effectiveness, making sure that we are operating as effective stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and also serving our 20,000 employees well in that way also. So then we have four essential pillars. Those essential pillars are the necessary conditions that will help us achieve each of those priorities. And so the little figure in the middle was especially important to our Board and District Leaders as we were developing this strategic plan because every pillar supports every priority. And so when we have a high-quality staff, when we have high-quality core instruction, when we have equitable systems, and when we have that family and community engagement, it will help us achieve each of those three priorities. So in that ZIP code that Brooksie mentions, this is where you can see our three and our four. And I'm going to move quickly to share with you our seven and our 20. So the seven are the goals. Our first three goals relate to priority. One, our student achievement goals. The first one is graduation rate. We do have that retained as our first goal. It came over from our last strategic plan. In our last goal, it was, I'm sorry, in our last plan, it was 95%. It is now 98%. What's important to understand in that 98% figure is that is actually every student for whom a four-year graduation rate, which is how the state measures it, would be most appropriate instructionally. We do have about 2% of students for whom four years isn't actually what would be best. That could be because they have a special education plan or that could also be because they are on a five-year associate's pathway as well. So that's what that high achieving 98% is about. And you see in that goal alongside all of our others, equity and excellence components. So closing those opportunity gaps in our graduation rate goal is a key part of achieving that 98% as well. Then the second one is proficiency. We want 90% proficiency overall. A frequent question that we get in that is why 90 if graduation rate is 98%? And that's because not all areas are measured by tests. And of course, we know not all students are always going to be the standardized takes-taking type as far as how they demonstrate their knowledge. So that's why you see a little bit of a difference there. And then finally, with growth, we want to make sure that 90% of our schools are exceeding the statewide average for growth and also closing gaps in that area as well. So then to look at Goals Four and Five, we'll move to Priority Two of Wellness. The first one is an attendance goal. This is something that has been really important for us post-pandemic. We do have the goal of students attending 90% of days. 90% is actually still missing about 20 school days. So that is actually still kind of a lot. But we know that that does mean that students are present and able to engage and we're able to reach them. Again, we want to look at our subgroup patterns there as well, make sure we're reaching all students equitably. And then the next one is student well-being. Students demonstrating the skills that they need in order to engage successfully. This includes things like responsible decision-making and being able to regulate their relationships with their peers as well as self-management. And so that's where we focused at Goal Five, making sure that students have those skills that demonstrate their well-being. And then we'll look at Goals Six and Seven for operational effectiveness. I alluded to this earlier, but we've defined operational effectiveness in two dimensions, the first one being internal and the second one being external. So internally, do our staff feel that we are operating effectively and providing them the resources that they need to be successful in their jobs? And we measure that with Goal Seven, a new employee engagement survey. Our survey window has actually just closed, and we were really excited to be able to get that input for the first time. We have had, provided by the state in the past, a teacher working conditions survey, but not necessarily anything that speaks to those other critical staff groups. So we're glad to collect that data now. And we'll be setting a target for that goal once we're able to review the baseline as the window literally closed last week. And then the parent and family experience is the other portion of that goal there. We want to make sure that our families are reporting a positive school climate as well as low barriers to engagement. And we do measure that each year with our families as well. And so then the last element that you see there are 20 aims. Each of those aims represents a work stream that is aligned, as shown here, to the priorities but also to the pillars as well. So each of those are sorted out as supporting Priority One, Pillar One, or Priority Two, Pillar Three, or something like that. So we have those work streams in a way that they're able to be matrixed and monitored with related metrics so that we know we are making progress towards our goals. So with that, I am going to turn it over to you all. We really have been wanting to engage in these conversations with our town councils this year because we've been wanting to hear what's important to you all. You all have constituents that you represent that are our constituents as well. And so we want to hear, A, what concerns you have that you'd like to relay to us as we are working to build our community partnerships more effectively, as you saw in the fourth pillar, but also to certainly be able to answer any of your questions that we can that would allay concerns that you've heard from your constituents as well. So I'll open the floor up for questions.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Body, followed by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
So first of all, I cannot overemphasize what a fabulous job I think the Wake County Public School System does. I moved here from Princeton, New Jersey, which is a highly rarefied educational environment. And four of my children went to school here at Alston Ridge Elementary, Mills Park Middle, Panther Creek High School, and went on to successful college careers. And I think you all are doing a fabulous job. I have some questions about Goal Five and Goal Six. The first one, in terms of Goal Five, how are you going to measure? Like, what are the metrics around student well-being? Because these things seem kind of fuzzy to me. So I just would be interested in how you're going to measure that.
Yes, absolutely. So we have already rolling out in phases a screener to measure these skills. So the way the screener works currently is that teachers report observed behaviors, such as have you observed a student expressing any physical aggression in the last two weeks? Those behaviors are then matrixed to what this skill set means. And they do that beginning of year, middle year, end of year, so we can see growth over time on specific students. We have started rolling it out. It is in about 2/3 of our schools with teachers doing the first level of the screener. By the time that we get to the end of our plan, it will also include student self-report of certain things that they experience in that data as well as parent report. I have observed these things or have these concerns about my child. So eventually, we'll have all three of those components that go into that data. We're rolling that out slowly over time. Right now, it is teachers' observed behaviors. So very much as you may have been attuned to something like a conduct score on a report card, it is not as subjective as that, though, because it is have these behaviors been demonstrated in the last two weeks? And then on the back end, it says, okay, based on the observed behaviors, there may be questions about decision-making or something like that. And then we're able to relay that information to counselors, social workers, and people in the behavioral health space who can then provide instruction to students based on that information that we have.
Okay. And is that going to be supported by more behavioral health professionals in the schools?
That is certainly our ask. We have prioritized local dollars to the extent possible to be able to provide more behavioral health professionals. However, ultimately, most of those are funded from the state, and it is one of our priorities in our legislative agenda that we're asking for more support there, for sure.
And then in terms of Goal Six, so how will you compensate for the fact that the families that fill out the survey are likely to be the more highly engaged families and the families that do have high barriers to engagement or are having a negative experience are much less likely to answer a survey? So how are you compensating for that?
Yes, yeah, that's a great question. So one of the things that we do monitor there that is critical is our response rate and ensuring that we have a high rate of response and increasing rate of response because that indicates better engagement in and of itself. We do have some measures that we have in place as far as reaching marginalized families that have been really successful and actually means, for instance, in our Title I schools, every family receives a paper survey and not just the digital survey. And our Title I schools actually have a higher response rate than our overall populations. And we've been thinking about what is some problem solving to do there. But we have some measures in place for that. We have translation into seven languages as another strategy that we have there. And we have identification of like a survey champion in each school and support provided for them for getting out the word about their survey. But certainly, increasing response rates is also an important part of that goal. In our last survey, we saw close to 40,000 responses. Our partner for the survey assures us that that is statistically representative. But we know what you said, which is that the people who are being most disengaged are the ones who didn't respond to the survey. And so we are always looking to increase the response rates in addition to monitoring the overall outcomes.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, definitely.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Both of my children have graduated from Wake County Public Schools, and so it's still fresh in my mind all the things that are available through the services. One of the unique, maybe not that unique, but one thing that I'm very cognizant of is that Morrisville families are very competitive, I would say. And education is a very high... is that Mooresville families are very competitive, I would say, and education is a very high goal for their children, and it's very important that they achieve highly. And there's a lot of pressure on those students, and we have lost students because they mentally could not withstand that pressure. And it's very important that we have the mental support. And I know you just mentioned to Councilmember Robotti that the state provides mental health support. I just don't think we fund it enough. I think we really are fragile, you know, with younger students wanting to please themselves and please their families and so forth. But it's a, it's a very tricky tightrope. And I would like to see more mental health resources, you know, in all the schools selfishly and the Mooresville student schools as well. So it's just one of those priority twos that you just mentioned, that I think mental health for students is really important. The other area that I wanted to touch upon is student knowledge and skills, which is your priority one. Students are suffering from student loans when they go to colleges and so forth, and it's getting even more expensive. But we are also nearing a very big gap of trade skill loss. What are the public schools looking at in terms of student knowledge and skills? Because not everybody wants to take on student loans, that's one thing. And the other is a lot of these students are looking at AP courses. And you don't need an AP course if you want to go into a trade that's highly compensated and you have no debt at all. So I know you've struggled with that. I wanted to learn more about that.
Sure, absolutely. Yes. Thank you for your advocacy. You were absolutely right. That is something we want to prioritize even more. And even your perspective made me think of something new that we can take back and think more about, which is what are we doing around behavioral health in our family engagement work? I think that's something that we've mentioned in a few different settings. We had a recent family engagement summit. There were some behavioral health sessions that were very popular. So that would be like, your advocacy would be a second data point, that that's really something we should explore more. So thank you for that. In regards to the trades, absolutely. We fully agree that students need to have a better understanding of the career pathways that are available to them outside four-year degrees. We have been expanding our early college offerings in our partnership with Wake Tech. Of course, you all may be familiar with Wake Early College of Information Biotechnologies, which is at Wake Tech's RTP campus. We just last week signed an MOU with a new organization called Spark NC, which provides some micro credentialing to students. There will be a location of that at the RTP campus and also at our East Wake campus in partnership with Wake Tech. And both of those things that we will be able to have students have industry credentials simply from that expiration. And it's focused specifically on high-tech industry like AI. And biotechnology is also another facet there. So I'm really excited about those opportunities. Something that we've been working on that you all could join us in is the understanding of career and college promise and what is available in our partnership with Wake Tech, such that, you know, when you take an AP class and you do well on that exam, a college can choose whether or not to honor your credit from the AP test. And in some cases, our more competitive universities don't, or they only honor it if it's a five. In North Carolina, if the student is planning to attend a four-year university and is planning to, in North Carolina, four-year university, and gets a credit in something like freshman English from Wake Tech, English 111 it's called, or basic level biology, physical sciences, those things as well, then the North Carolina Public University has to honor that credit. And so actually, for some families, career and college promise may be a better option than AP classes, but I just think it's not widely known as it doesn't get necessarily the national attention that something like an AP course would get. You know, if you're from another state and you come here knowing about AP courses, you don't necessarily know that North Carolina has career and college promise. So I think that's something we could advertise better, but you all could also join us in that advocacy as well, because career and college promise is available to every Wake County student.
Is, do you partner with Wake Tech with their new tech center, which teaches trades?
We do, yes.
And could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yep. So we do have a current partnership and are always growing our partnerships with Wake Tech for trade-level courses. We also have all of our early colleges, which have specific trade focuses based on their locations as well. And Wake Tech has those offerings through college career promise. Again, a student could be a student at Panther Creek and access those things. They don't actually have to attend an early college to get college career promise credits. So yes, we do work frequently with Wake Tech on how can we increase that knowledge and that availability? As we understand from our current processes with them and their data monitoring and what they've shared from us, it is more available than it is accessed. So it is about making sure that parents have that information and that the community sees it as just as valuable.
So that's a lot of information. I don't want to hog the time, but I think it's really important that students be aware that there's more than just the AP courses, because it seems like that is the banner that everybody knows. But to have diverse options in early college or, you know, Wake Tech partners or being a dual student at Wake Tech, all of that is important, I think, in the fabric in our town. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Pretam Garamella, followed by Councilmember Ralph, please.
So I'll join the bandwagon of bragging rights, right? Like, you know, all the kids here at Wake County. But again, like, I'll start by saying, you know, same my son, he Greenhope, Carnage, Enlow, NCSSM, and UNC now. But the thing that is important to me is till he went to Carnage, it's a different equation completely. The quality of education and options that you get in a magnet school is much, much higher than in a regular school. And then when you go to Enlow, it's more. As Vicky said, this area is like, you know, is very competitive, and they are hungry for, you know, get the best they can. And many of the kids go to the magnet schools because of the quality which is there. Why can't, why is that only in a magnet school? And why is not in other schools? Example, Panther Creek, they won't even give an option to take an AP in the freshman year. In Enlow, you're allowed to take three to four APs even in a freshman. So it's, within the school itself, you see a lot of differences and tracks and other things. It's good to say Wake County, but you know, every, every school has a different way of offering it. And is that, I don't see that equitable, because in terms of the coursework that was offered, how can we have more towards a better way of, you know, getting towards that?
Yes, thank you for your question. You're right, there are specialized offerings in magnet schools that are not available in every school. There is actually a different equity reason for that as well as an operational effectiveness reason. So to talk about the equity reason first, it is intended to be able to provide resources in lower-poverty schools and to draw students from higher socioeconomic areas and to lower socioeconomic areas. It's been an important part of how our district has been known nationally for their integration efforts. That said, it's also somewhat operational effectiveness. So the number of certifications for teachers to have certain AP pathways or to provide those very specialized teachers in all of those places, wouldn't, it wouldn't be possible to offer everything in every place. And so by being able to concentrate it, and again, making sure we have things like transportation provided to those magnet schools, which we do, makes it so that we can be efficient and effective in having those offerings available in concentrated places rather than like spreading it out. Because there are many layers of things that go behind those programs, and so those concentrations there are another one of those considerations. That is to say, there's, it's not that we couldn't be doing more, because of course we could. And I, and I think I would go back to the conversation we were having here, that it actually would not require any additional resources to take better advantage of our career and college promise offerings. Aside from, AP has a lot of credentialing. It's quite expensive. Again, that's not required for career college promise. So I think we can start thinking about it more creatively and think of, are we tapping into some of those resources and making sure that families know that those other things are available too?
Yeah. So, but I want to ensure, like, I reiterate, I'm not kind of saying when I said the equity, I'm not talking about the equity of the, like, you know, the, why the magnet schools. I'm very much familiar with that. I'm talking about the equity of the classes that is offered across. Because you are not given an option, like, getting into magnet schools is not easy. It's a lottery system, you know, or if you're on the part of AIG. So a person who is capable and didn't get a chance to go to the magnet school, but is there in the base school, he's like, almost like two, three grades down, you know, as compared to Enlow, because I compare with his classmates, they're like three grades down in math. So that is not that they cannot. They are pretty effective. They are as intelligent or smart than anyone else, and but the opportunity is lost. For me, I see, you know, that they could have also utilized it. And lastly, like, Ready Creek, I think is a new magnet that, so is there possibility of having those magnets or anything around this area? Because that would also be a good one, because the quality of education is, it's not, I would not say like, the options are given so many that I don't even know where to start.
Yes, yes. We definitely hear that feedback often, that there are so many options. It feels like you're searching for a college when you're going to kindergarten. And certainly, that continues through middle school and high school. So yes, we are always reevaluating where magnet programming is located. We do that primarily through the socioeconomic lens. And as you see neighborhoods change, then you can see, you know, demographic patterns aging out, things like that, and you see new needs come in, as did with Ready Creek in your example. That is true. So we are constantly reevaluating that. We also have, it's actually, there is aim for expanding our opportunities to make sure we're offering proportional programming for gifted students and for students with special needs in, within our schools and within our existing resources. So that is absolutely one of our aims as well, is how do we provide better opportunities by looking at things like course sequencing, by making sure the students are placed correctly when they enter middle school, which determines where they go when they enter high school and those kinds of things. So yes, we are absolutely working on it within traditional school programming, too. Yes.
Thank you for all that you guys do.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Yeah, a few, a few weeks ago, we hosted an event with John Chambers, who ran Cisco. He's out with Venture Capitalist. It's a pretty amazing story, because he was a dyslexic who came out of my home state of West Virginia. And so he talked a lot about kind of like how, when he was growing up, his family was so supportive of him, and he had a few teachers that taught him how to use his dyslexia to an advantage. So it really made me think about the kind of kids that are left out, who don't test AIG, they're, you know, not honing maybe potential skills that they have. But the one thing he said that had a lot of us not really concerned is, he said that we're living in an age today where the pace at which jobs are being displaced are happening much faster than when the way we can replenish those jobs. But he says we need a strategy across all areas, corporate strategies, but he mentioned K through 12 colleges, community colleges. So I know everyone doesn't want to be a data scientist or an AI engineer or, you know, robotics engineer, but to what extent are, my concern is that it's moving so fast that how can the schools keep up with that change? Is it going to be continuing partnering with community colleges? Is there going to be collaboration with industries as these companies are creating new jobs and new opportunities that they say, well, these are, these are the kinds of skills we need? And I think you already mentioned some of them, team building, interpersonal relationships. I do have a concern, the final thing I'll say, is on devices, because all of us here in this room, we grew up in schools where we didn't have phones, we didn't have an internet, we didn't have all these things. And now there's just such a disengagement that kids are just so attached to the device, it's affecting their social interaction, which could lead them to feel secluded and lonely. So, you know, I guess those are just some concerns that I have. But I'm just curious about the flexibility of the school system to deal with the increasing pace of innovation.
Yes, you've, you've hit on the things that we think about all day, every day, of making sure that we can keep up. And the truth of the matter is, it is providing those skills that students will need that are soft skills that can translate into any job, because we can't envision the jobs that they will be doing. And even though something like my role did exist two decades ago because of devices and the changing pace of technology, like, I do it different than someone would have done it two decades ago. The expectations on me are different. So it is absolutely about preparing them for those skill sets. And we are working to build our business partnerships so that we can have more internship opportunities as another stream that we're really looking at for students, so that they have some of that real-world experience in their resume. You know, that's a big part of deciding whether or not you want to pursue a career, is having the opportunity to experience some of it. I loved what I heard about Camp Ignite. That's really cool. And I wrote it down to make sure that our schools around here know about it. But I think more of experiencing those opportunities, but then also seeing what it's like in the real world. And honestly, we have to teach students things like team building. When I was in the classroom 10 years ago, I had to stop kids from talking. When I visit classrooms now, our teachers have to make the kids talk to each other. So it is something that's changed a lot over the last decade, but it's something we put a lot of intentionality into making sure that, that students have those skill sets and that our teachers are equipped to do things like that, because that's not necessarily something that they were taught in school either.
That's hilarious that you have to make them talk to each other. Councilmember Johnson.
So first, I'm just going to make, first, thank you for being here and being here so late. I promise I'll be really quick. I just want to make two points, and then I want to just talk about the 300 residents that are employed by Wake. I've never seen that figure before, and that kind of, I think that's fabulous. So are those teachers, staff, that's just a kind of across-the-board folks that are employed by Wake County Public Schools?
Yes, that would be all roles.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
Yes.
Good. We'll have to get that number up higher, but we're working on it. We're working on that. But anyhow, and you said, you know, what, what are we hearing from our residents that you're interested in hearing about? And I'm going to echo what Mayor Pretam Garamella said about the magnet program and about how there aren't a lot of options here on this side of the county, especially in Western Wake, for magnets. And I don't want to, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. So magnets are placed in socioeconomic developed, socioeconomic areas. So does that mean we're never going to see one in Western Wake County?
It doesn't. That is their historical pattern.
Okay.
That is how they were created historically. We do know now that we have to look at other factors, such as being competitive with charter and private schools in the area. And so we are considering now a wider net of factors. Historically, that's how they were established. And there is some advantage to that, if you think about a school like Enlow. It's not just that they have a strong program, it's that they've had a strong program for 40 years, right? And so like, that, that is part of it, too. And so that part does, does make a difference, but, but no, that's not the only thing we make decisions based on now.
Okay, because that is something we all do hear about, that the magnet program is fabulous, but the schools are so far away and it's so hard to get into. And, you know, so I'm not sure, I know there's lots of folks, I'm sure, that apply, but I'm not sure you get everybody who wants to to apply, because they give up even before they go to the application process. So that's one thing we do hear a lot. And then the other thing, and Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson kind of talked about this, not, not every student, I see the four-year not every student, I see the four-year college graduation rate, that that really is important to get folks, to get kids through the four years or whatever, five years, three and a half, whatever, but to get them to graduate. But not every child is geared to go to college, not every child, that's not their path in life. And so I understand the association with Wake Tech and helping with trades and all that, but what else is happening at the high school level? And I will, my girls graduated, went through, we went year round, so we did the year round route and then Green Hope High School and UNC School System and they are functioning fabulous, people out there in society making their mark in the world. So Wake County Public School System has done a fabulous job for my children as well. But what are we doing for those that that is not their path?
Yes, absolutely. So thank you for your advocacy there. Also, we are focusing on increasing what we call CTE or Career Technical Education Pathways even within our high schools and actually in our middle schools as well. And so there are certain things like, for examples, there's something called the work keys, which is where students can get tested qualifications and things that would be beneficial to employers. So I am Google certified, I am Microsoft proficient, these types of things. And so we've been working on expanding those offerings for our students as well so that they have those skills as well as some things that are like career development, like they have opportunities to take classes to build a resume, more internships as I mentioned before as well. But we definitely have that in mind. The phrase that we use is career or college ready. We do that on purpose because we do want our students to be career ready, not just college ready.
Yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate that. That's really important too because I hear that as well. And Councilmember Crogan, Johnson is right, very competitive, even when my girls were going through high school, it was competitive, you know, how many APs are you taking and so, but that's not everybody. And I, and especially here in Western Wake County and especially here in Morrisville, there are those that need, you know, that other path that's equally as important for them and their success in life. So those programs you just talked about available in every high school?
So it's similar to, some programs are available in every high school, not every program is available in every high school. And that just has to do with that operational efficiency and those resources. Something that we recently have really been up against that I'll mention because I think you all can help us be advocates in that area, is that when we are losing more and more skilled teachers to their traits. So biology teachers to life science companies as well as, you know, HVAC, big challenge for our school system, big challenge in the industry. We can't get, we can't have HVAC programs because we can't get teachers to teach HVAC because they make so much more in industry that they would never want to be a teacher. So those things are also a challenge and something that I would just say, we are not giving up on that, we are looking at what are credentialing, hey, can we get one class? Hey, can we work with a business partner to bring in some of these things? Like we're actively problem solving that, but I will say it is an active challenge that we're facing and that we do have to problem solve in our wages not being competitive for teachers that we need in those career areas especially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like you're encouraging us to stop recruiting life sciences.
Absolutely not, just maybe tell them that a few people, that they should give us some teachers.
Okay, fair enough. We're providing firefighters as fast as we can. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I think I'll be quick. So my kid did not go through the Wake County School System because we tried to get into a magnet program when he was in kindergarten and he didn't get in. Also, our neighborhood was redistrict three times in three years that we were there. So we were in a charter school, which actually brought me to Morrisville at Sterling Montessori. So I do have a question about the magnet program. So the magnet, so the magnet schools that we have, what percentage is funded by the federal government?
So I don't know that figure off the top of my head, I would have to follow up to get it for you specifically, but I can say that that is how all of our programs are founded, are with federal funding. We don't always have a grant for every school, but every time we add a new program, it's with federal funding. And we also sometimes have extra state funding for certain programming as well, so it comes from a few different places. I can say that overall throughout our school system, our federal funding is about 10% of the whole budget of the school system, 80% of the budget of the school system does come from the state of North Carolina in our typical state funding in a similar formula to how they fund other school systems. What percent is in only magnet programs because we also get federal programming for other things I'd have to follow up on.
All right, yeah, because I had always heard that that was the way we were able to integrate in Wake County because of the federal funding for the magnet schools. And I've just always thought that is such a brilliant idea. So then with, if we, if you guys were to have a magnet school in Western Wake somewhere, would that end up being federally funded?
So when they're started, they are. They're all started with federal grants that are needed to uplift and begin the programming. So not as far west as Morrisville, but the example given previously, Ready Creek Middle, because of the extra like training needed for those teachers, for example, like those are the things that, types of things that come from the federal grant. Also recently, Athens Drive Magnet High School, as you all know, they, or you may not know, they won number one magnet school in the country this past spring and they are a fairly new magnet, recently magnetized on a grant, I mean, not brand, brand new like Ready Creek, but pretty new in their magnet programming and they were chosen as number one in the whole country. We are, as a district and as an area, known for that as you mentioned, and it is from federal resources that we're able to start new programs for the most part. Again, not entirely because like, for instance, some of our choice schools, like our early colleges, that is state funding that starts some of those application schools like early colleges. So mostly, but not entirely.
Okay, so in the Athens School and Ready Creek, were they designated magnet schools because of socioeconomic?
Yeah, there were socioeconomic components to both of those, that's what's required for federal grants, is the socioeconomic component. It can be, again, like I said, somewhat about recruiting from the base and making sure that you stay competitive in a base area. So that's a new avenue that we've been exploring more recently. Would not be familiar enough with the specific demographics of either of those schools to say where it fell on that line, but just in general, socioeconomic requirements are the requirements for the federal magnet grants.
Okay, thank you.
I'm last, I just have one comment about your fifth goal, about how that's so ambitious and generally outside of what people usually think of as a school's role. So I think that's wonderful that you guys are doing that, I think mindfulness is really important. We did that a little bit at Weatherstone Elementary when my kids were coming through and it's just really great. It's wonderful to hear about Athens Drive doing so well, I actually know the principal there and I hadn't heard about that. So exciting things are happening in Wake County. We really appreciate you coming to see us and sharing all these good things. Seems to change every couple of years, you guys are getting a lot more granular, really trying to put some goals and some metrics behind things, which I think is important. I think that's coming from the leadership and Dr. Taylor's doing a great job. So we really appreciate everything you do for our students, as was mentioned. Morrisville families feel education is one of the most important things and that's why they're here in Wake County, that's why they're here in Morrisville. And we can't thank you enough for everything that you do, please pass along our thanks to all your peers.
Yes, thank you, we absolutely will. We really appreciate you all's support and the important things that you've elevated for us tonight, it will be helpful for us to take back and share those concerns as well. Thank you all, we appreciate the time.
Have one more thing, Councilmember Body.
I did want to mention just one more thing along the lines of student well-being. I do think that the number of times in the past five years since I've been on the council that we've asked students in Morrisville to change schools, I do think that is strongly detrimental to student well-being. And I feel like, this might just be my perception, but I feel like Morrisville kids are more precariously placed in their schools than kids, for example, in Cary, even though they may only live three or four miles away. So that's something that I would very much like you to put in the hopper and maybe distribute those school assignment impacts more equitably across Morrisville, Cary apex. I really do feel that we sometimes get the shaft.
Thank you, I'll be sure to take that back.
That'd be great.
It's definitely a perception we get, it bubbles up in waves, but we really appreciate stability whenever possible. Okay, excellent, well, thanks again. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Councilmember Body, a second from Councilmember Fender. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. It is 10:44, we are adjourned. It is 10:44, we are adjourned.